I want to note with sadness the passing of Bruce Jacobs, who was president of the Coalition of the Rockaways. An article about Bruce Jacobs in The Rockaway Wave had the perfect headline, "A Fighter for His Community." And the sentiments that were expressed by many in the article, I think, reflect the fondness, the respect that the Planning Commission had for Bruce Jacobs, who was a frequent presenter at our commissions. "The 101st Precinct" said, "Thank you for always being the eyes, the ears, the hands, and the voice of Far Rockaway." The Jewish Community Council of the Rockaway Peninsula described Bruce as "a proud veteran who loved the Rockaways and always kept all of us on our toes." And the Democratic District Leader described him as "a man who loved his community." He attended all the community board meetings and spoke up for the residents of the Edgemere and Far Rockaway neighborhoods. And I think this captures Bruce, and I know I speak on behalf of the commission in sending condolences to his family.
Here, here.
And with that, Ryan, I will turn it over to you.
There, now I'm not muted. That's good. Good morning. Verbal testimony may be provided online through the NYC Engage portal or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register online to the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial and participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another one. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. The participant ID, press the pound sign to skip, and the password is the numeral 1. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. Please note that whether you are accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must register if you want to speak. Please also note that the testimony will be audio only. The commissioners will hear you, but will not be able to see you. When it is your turn to speak, you will be notified and granted temporary speaking privileges by staff, so please listen closely for your name to be called. If you're accessing the hearing online, your name will be called from a list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You should see a notice on your screen allowing you to unmute your microphone. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from a list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. Please note that muting and unmuting registered speakers take some time, and so we're adjusting to the new format. So give us some patience. For those accessing the hearing through the online livestream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal. It is not possible to testify through the online livestream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must first register to speak through the dial and participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It is not possible to testify via telephone without first having registered. Please limit your remarks to three minutes and speak clearly into your microphone. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the line and are not limited to three minutes. And if an applicant, if translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And then if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached, at which point your microphone will be muted. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via livestream, that the livestream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning, mailing an email address who can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that the remote public hearing and all testimony provided is being recorded.
And with that, Madam Secretary, I would ask that you please begin the meeting.
Good morning, Chair Lago. Good morning, Commissioners. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage portal. Today is Wednesday, January 6, 2021. I will now call the roll. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Here.
Commissioner De La Use.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marine. Commissioner Marine. Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rabashad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, December 16, 2020, and the special meeting on Monday, January 4, 2021.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
The next item is scheduling. On calendars numbers 1 through 14, we have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, January 20, 2021, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage portal.
On the resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is Reports section on page 12. Reports. Borough of Brooklyn. Calendars number 15 and 16. CD 12, calendar number 15. C 200062ZMK, calendar number 16. N 200063ZRK. In the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning the 16th Avenue rezoning. Favorable reports on calendars number 15 and 16. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Use.
Yes, though I hope the council modifies the application to remove MIH option two for what is really a commercial redevelopment project.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rabashad.
Yes.
Favorable reports were adopted on calendars number 15 and 16. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 17, CD 10. N 210176Hik. In the matter of a communication concerning landmark designation of the Angel Guardian Home, an adoption of calendar number 17 for referral to the city council. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Use.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rabashad.
Yes.
Favorable report was adopted on calendar number 17. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 18 and 19. CD 2, calendar number 18. C 200303ZSQ, calendar number 19. N 200304ZRQ. In the matter of applications for a special permit and a zoning text amendment concerning 42-11 99th Street Special Permit. Favorable reports on calendars numbers 18 and 19. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Use.
Yes, and I hope that the applicant takes up the community board's recommendation with regard to reduce industrial rents for a portion of the industrial space.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rabashad.
Yes.
Excuse me, Madam Secretary. Sir Secretary, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, Commissioner Marine.
Thank you. I've been on for a while now, and apparently there's been a problem with my voice control. And I'd like to be acknowledged as voting yes on the prior items, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Marine. It has been noted.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
A favorable report was adopted on calendars number 18 and 19. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 18.
Madam Secretary.
Excuse me?
Madam Secretary, I've been here, but I was muted.
Welcome, Madam Secretary. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, the next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 18. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 20, CD 17. N 210194HKK. A public hearing in the matter of a communication concerning the landmark designation of the East 25th Street Historic District.
I will note that we do not appear to have any speakers on this matter. The commission will recall that on Monday we had a presentation by a representative of the Landmarks Preservation Commission. And Ryan, I would just check to see, again, to double-check whether anyone has signed up to speak on this matter.
Let me just give, I'll update the record. No, no, no more speakers, Madam. No speakers have signed up for this.
So I think we will be setting a record for the shortest public hearing, and the public hearing on this matter is now closed.
Okay, Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 21 and 22. CD 7, calendar number 21, C 20029ZMK. Calendar number 22, N 20030ZRQ. A public hearing in the matter of applications for the zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 737 Fourth Avenue rezoning.
We are going to have a 10-minute team presentation by a team comprised of Eric Palotnick, Elizabeth Cannella, Tucker Reed, Vivian Leau, and Moscar Srivastava.
Chair, I just want to note that I'm recused from this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner De La Use. And Madam Secretary, if you would start the clock when the applicant team begins its presentation.
Okay.
Mr. Palotnick, are you and your team ready to present?
Yes, we are, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity. I was waiting for the word from you that we were okay. So with your permission, we'd like to proceed.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. It is an absolute pleasure for us to be here today to seek your approval of a rezoning of a tremendously underutilized site on Fourth Avenue in Brooklyn that's just at the end of an R8A corridor resting within an M11D district. It's currently improved upon with surface parking, a Dunkin' Donuts, and some other assorted retail, which we'll speak about in a second. And we're asking your permission to allow us to construct an R8A C24 development that would stand 14 stories tall, would have 134 units, 33 of which would be affordable. To present the application today is Vivian Leau, Tucker Reed, and Elizabeth Cannella of Totum. Totum is the developer of the app of the project, and they've been intimately involved with the community for the past year, going through every aspect of this proposal. What you see in front of you is the result of that input. And now I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Reed for him to present.
Hi, and I think Vivian Leau and Tucker Reed are muted. Is it possible to unmute them?
Can everyone hear me now? Okay, thank you. Sorry. Apologies for the technical difficulties, and thank you for the opportunity to present. My name is Vivian Leau, and I'm one of the principals of Totum. You'll also be hearing from my partner Tucker Reed and our amazing project manager Liz Cannella in a moment. Totum is a small Brooklyn-based real estate and urban design firm, which we started five years ago, bringing our collective experience in government, urban design, and real estate to focus on local projects that benefit communities. You can move to the next slide, please. The common thread tying our projects together is the approach we take to centering the voices of communities in which we work. From local projects, like some that you see here, design projects to help restaurants and retailers open post-COVID, to real estate work on behalf of organizations like Bed-Stuy Restoration Corporation, to global projects in San Salvador focused on climate prevention through environmental design. Next slide, please. Our approach to development starts by identifying an opportunity or challenge that isn't being fully addressed. Then we do a research. We spend time listening, engaging with the community, and partner with them to develop collaborative solutions that can help meet neighborhood needs, such as affordable housing and job creation. That's the process we've taken here for this project as well. We spent the past 18 months working with the community, meeting with local stakeholders and the community board to take into account their wishes in the efforts to develop this project that benefits the neighborhood. Next slide, please. The opportunity we're talking about is an underbuilt fast-food chain in a neighborhood that is facing a housing crisis. Without using public funds, we bring 133 units, plus one super's unit, of new housing to the neighborhood, one in four of which will be permanently affordable to the residents who live here. Slide 5. Why is this so important? Next slide, please. As you can see here from data pulled together by the Fifth Avenue Committee, which I know Commissioner De La Use knows well. In a recent report they released, Sunset Park's population continues to grow and rents continue to rise. But in the next slide, you'll see housing production has not kept pace. Since 2014, a little more than 1,000 housing units got built in the Community Board District. Only 10% of those were affordable. That's 108 units. And for a little context, our one project alone would represent the first MIH project in this district and a more than 30% increase of all the affordable units built in the district over the last six years. Next slide, please. Clearly, the housing crisis is a pervasive issue, which isn't going to be solved by just one project, which is why FAC proposed a number of recommendations to tackle it, ranging from preserving the existing housing stock to building 100% affordable housing on government-owned land. And on this slide, you see here, where our project fits in is captured by point three. Through the city's mandatory inclusionary housing program, without any city subsidy, we can bring 33 permanently affordable units online to start the process now. All we need to move forward on this is a rezoning of the block in which the site sits. And I'm going to turn it over to Tucker now to go into some more of the details.
Thanks, Jim. Next slide, please. So we tried to take a contextual approach to this rezoning action. As you see, the R8A overlay on Fourth Avenue that terminates one block to the north of our site, which is captured in right here. Next slide, please. The surrounding land use framework, predominantly housing to our north and a couple blocks to our south. There is this small manufacturer district that our site falls within predominantly underutilized today, though, and on our site specifically, underutilized retail. Next slide, please. So the action that we're looking for is an extension of the R8A overlay, one block face to capture our site between 24th and 25th here on Fourth Avenue. We actually own both sites, but only have immediate plans for development on the site that you see highlighted here. That is a Dunkin' Donuts parking lot directly across the street from the R train station on the 25th Street R train. We worked very hard over the last two years to create a contextual building program approach here. Studied the heights and density that's been established on Fourth Avenue to our north here. And at the bottom of the slide, you see how our proposed development would kind of nestle into the surrounding buildings. We incorporated feedback from the community board and others that asked us to, you know, stay smaller than neighborhood landmarks like the church steeple across the street. Next slide, please. And then even contextually looking up and down 25th Street from the waterfront up to Greenwood Cemetery, making sure that the proposed development would not be taller than surrounding buildings. Next slide, please. Other community concerns around view corridors, a very specific concern from Greenwood Heights Cemetery is that the view from the Minerva statue would always be able to look out into Lady Liberty and the harbor. So we made sure that our view there, that site corridor was not violated, as well as the next slide, please. That the development didn't block any views of Sunset Park proper. Next slide, please. And so what we ended up with is, hopefully, a contextual response to extend the R8A zoning overlay that would be a transit-oriented development of approximately 145 feet with a ground floor retail and residential above. Next slide, please. We would end up with approximately 144,000 square feet of development rights across the entire site. But on the Dunkin' Donuts lot in particular, of 108,000 square feet, that would allow us to build approximately 134 units, as Vivian described, approximately 25%, of which would be affordable. Next slide, please. Yeah, the materiality that has gone into the design of the building is trying to make contextual context around terracotta finish on the lower ends of the building and more glass and steel as we move up into the building so that blends into the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Bean elements, terracotta design. Next slide, please. There's a lot of discussion around green infrastructure in the neighborhood and making sure that things like file swales and the sidewalks and green roofs were incorporated. Next slide, please. And providing of an easement to the MTA to come back and build a a potential elevator down 25th Street subway station at no cost to the MTA, a free easement in return for the zoning action. Next slide, please. As well as a focus on neighborhood retail and creating smaller spaces for neighborhood amenities that serve the small businesses of Sunset Park. Next slide, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to jump in really quickly with the limited time that we have to talk about the continued community benefits. So for the 25% affordability, we are targeting AMIs between 30 and 60% of AMI with an average less than 60% of AMI.
With apologies, I'm afraid that the time is up. And so at this point, I would open it up to commissioners who have questions. Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. I believe the applicant was speaking about AMI. If you could just give us a little more background on the AMI that you were speaking about?
Yes. Yes, so we are targeting with an option one, AMIs between 30 and 60%. And we are partnering with Fifth Avenue Committee to lead the marketing and access. As asked by Mayor Ford Seven, we're going to be targeting communities that speak across the four languages in Community Board Seven. And this is representative of units, sorry, this is representative for apartments from one bedroom to three bedroom for the affordable housing. I can answer continued questions on that.
If I could, before turning back to the commissioners, if I could ask Jeff in production, if you could mute people who aren't speaking? We've had a pretty steady stream of laughter and speaking in the background. Thank you. Other questions from the commission?
I think Commissioner Levin was trying to ask a question.
Yes, that's right. Somehow my mute, my raise-hand function has disappeared. I'm going to not take that as a personal message.
No, I think they've all disappeared, actually. I don't have one either.
I could ask, great, Commissioner Levin?
Yes, then I would just like to ask about the future plans for Development Site Two, the 731 site. Why is it that you're not pursuing both at the same time? And what, it looks like some of the architecture has given attention to, you know, folding that into Development Site One eventually. But could you explain to us a little bit why you're doing this in two pieces?
Surely. Thanks for the question. It makes a lot of sense. The reason is there is existing, an existing lease at the corner of Fourth Avenue and 24th Street that extends out until the mid 2030s. There's an existing bodega there that has a long-term leasehold. And so at this point, that would preclude us from incorporating the site into the Phase One development. But if the rezoning is approved, we'd obviously try to accelerate that timeline for that small business owner to potentially relocate into the Phase One development so that we can turn to the Phase Two faster.
And architecturally?
I'm sorry, say that again.
And could you talk about how you plan to integrate that eventual development into this new one? Will they end up looking like one building? Or are these two separate buildings? I mean, obviously, physically, they're two separate buildings.
Right. I mean, it's the same ownership group and the same architect and the same design intention. So we could end up incorporating the same design principles and particularly along the line of materiality and ground floor activation to try to create a kind of seamless development in the long term.
Okay. And in the meantime, it looks like the north facade will have a blank wall that will be a fairly exposed view coming down Fourth Avenue. Have you given any attention to interim measures you could make to make that a little bit more appealing view?
Yes, we've talked in great length with the local community board about two mitigating measures, either a green wall that could be incorporated into the development or working with local arts groups on public art along the facade.
Those would be fantastic options. There's a modest example of that on 10th Avenue in Manhattan, on 10th Avenue, and I believe it's 53rd or 54th Street.
Thank you. We'll look into that.
I hope you can do better than that one, but it was exactly the same issue.
Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on that. I mean, there's a history of ungainly buildings on Fourth Avenue with no street activity at all. ungainly buildings on Fourth Avenue with no street activity at all. So I'm very happy to see that you have retail on the ground floor. But you talk about, you know, neighborhood amenities, but it looks as though the ground floor is like one big space, which tends to lend itself to a bank or a drugstore, which really doesn't promote very much street activity. So I'm wondering if, is there any plan to subdivide those spaces at the ground floor so that they would be more likely to be rented to small neighborhood stores?
That is absolutely the intention. First of all, there, there actually doesn't end up being a ton of retail space on the ground floor. Once you account for the lobbies, the MTA easement, et cetera. And with the MTA easement kind of coming right in the smack dab middle of the development site, it will force us to carve the spaces into smaller sites. And we've also, you know, been working with the community board and hopefully the local business improvement district on helping to kind of curate those spaces to make them available for local entrepreneurs.
Okay, good. Thank you.
If other commissioners who are interested in speaking would raise their hands, I see Commissioner Dweck.
Yeah, thank you. My audio, my, was cutting in and out earlier. So I just wanted to know if they can address the Borough President's recommendations, including the bedroom mix and the increase in FER dedicated to affordable housing, if they can address that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, we've gone through a long conversation with the local community and and obviously the Borough President's Office on bedroom sizes and mixes. It's, it's what led us to eliminating all studio apartments from the development in the program at this point, as well as pushing for larger bedroom sizes, devoting close to one third of the development for two and three bedrooms. And then on the increment on the affordable side, I mean, we're, we're attempting here to go well above and beyond the MIH option one. Instead of an average at 60% of AMI, doing a range capped at 60, but going down as low as 30% of AMI to provide real affordability and accessibility for neighborhood residents to these units, recognizing that the, the AMIs in Sunset Park are much lower than the citywide averages. And so that the MIH off the shelf program needed some tweaking in order to, to really make it accessible for the local neighborhood. And it's a conversation that, you know, we've been engaging, committed to with the community board for, for many, many months. And, you know, we'll continue to, you know, work with the BP's office and the community board to codify that.
Thank you.
Any other raised hands from the commissioners? And I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you for physically raised hands. Okay. I will then thank the applicant team. And before turning to the three speakers who have signed up, I will note that if you haven't registered to speak, but have decided during the course of this hearing that you'd like to, now is the time to register. And again, you can find instructions on how to register, whether online or via telephone at www.nyc.gov/nycengage. And with that, we will turn to Daniel Labor. Mr. Labor.
Sorry, I was just waiting for the queue to unmute.
Thank you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
I just wanted to thank both the commissioners and Totem for their time today. I just, I've been following this project since the beginning. I'm a member of Community Board seven. I've lived here for about 10 years and I just really appreciate what Totem has done in terms of trying to both engage the community and really be thoughtful in the design of what they're, of the project they're trying to do from the bike parking and the access to the subway, but also trying to activate that Fourth Avenue corridor in a more responsible way and really offering real affordability to the community. It's something that I find that most developers don't take the time to do. And I think this project could be a really good addition to the community and a benefit to the community. And I wish more developers would act with the kind of responsibility and forethought that these, this group has done. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Labor. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Alap Vora.
All right. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Great. Happy New Year to everybody. I am also a lifelong Brooklyn resident and a small business owner in the community. And I just wanted to, you know, give my support for this project as well. I too have been following it closely and have, have seen and kind of appreciate the thoughtful development, but also, you know, to consider what's on that space right now. I think it's more than reasonable to say it's quite underutilized. And for somebody to have a private development there without any city funding and, you know, not only just create jobs, but create affordable housing units as part of the development, I think, you know, is, is almost a no brainer. Right now, even the, the single existing tenant there, you know, might have a handful of employees, but you know, with the number of businesses that are going to hopefully open up on the ground floor in addition to the staff and people that are needed to, to manage a property, I think, you know, it's certainly going to create a nice little hub within the Fourth Avenue neighborhood. So I do give my support to this project and I hope the rest of the planning commission does as well. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Questions from the commission. Thank you, Mr. Vora. Our next speaker is Audrey James. Audrey James. Ryan, could you check whether Audrey James has stolen the call?
I don't see Audrey James. We will make a note and keep an eye out for a return.
Then we will move to Jessica Murray.
Morning.
Good morning.
Murray. Good morning. I'm part of the Elevator Action Group with Rise and Resist. And our mission is to get more elevators into the subway. We've been working on this project for the last four years. And we are in support of this particular development because of the subway easement that the developers are providing to the MTA. Today, many of you probably know there are about 350 subway stations that are inaccessible with no funding or plans at the moment to become accessible. So we just appreciate the forward thinking of Totem, making room for the future elevator development that can happen there. If anyone's been to the 25th Avenue Station, it's a very narrow platform. When developers build buildings next to subway stations without making space for elevators, often it makes the later installations more difficult and more costly. So this is really a significant thing that they're doing here. And we just want to throw our, our full support behind the project. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the commission. Commissioner Levin.
Yes, Ms. Murray, since you're here, thank you very much for showing up and, and speaking to us. Um, I have a question about the proposed temporary use of this easement for the Borough President has recommended a cultural use. It's obviously a space that could be activated in the interim between the, between the, you know, the time the building is complete and the time the MTA is able to put in the elevator. Do you have any thoughts on temporary uses of these kinds of easements, whether that's something you would encourage or support? And whether you have any examples of other locations where this has occurred, where effective temporary uses have been put in?
I, I don't know of any examples of temporary uses, but we have discussed it with Totem and you know, there, there's a lot of potential for art or civic spaces. We could also have information about the elevator that will be there in the future. I, I know that they said that they, they can't really rent the space because it's, it's not really enough space to rent commercially. But I think there, they seem to be open and very active engaging with the community. So I, I have no doubt that they would find a good use for that space.
And your, your group would be on board with that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Murray. Our next speaker is Mark Espinoza.
Hi, good morning. My name is Marcus Pinoza. I'm a 13 year member for 32BJ. And I have been a lifelong Brooklyn resident. I'm speaking today on behalf of my union to express our support for the proposed project at 737 Fourth Avenue. 32BJ supports responsible development that includes a credible commitment to prevailing wage building service jobs and permanently affordable housing. I am happy to report that Totem, the developer for this project, has made a commitment to provide good prevailing wage jobs at this site. Personally, I know how the impact of prevailing wage job can have on a family's life. In my experience as a cleaner, earning a prevailing wage and having access to quality, affordable health insurance has been crucial to my family's security. Because of our health insurance, my wife was able to receive the support throughout her pregnancy and safely deliver our newborn daughter. As a new family, we are not burdened with the cost of an expensive hospital bill. Because of the benefits I get from my union job, we can live without worry. Working families in Sunset Park deserve jobs that allow essential workers like me and our families to thrive in New York City and get the healthcare that we need. For these reasons, we respectfully urge the council to approve this rezoning. Thank you.
Well, congratulations on your new daughter, Mr. Espinoza, and for highlighting the importance of healthcare. Questions from the commission. Again, thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Yannick James.
Hello?
Hello, please go ahead.
Okay, great. My name is Yannick James. I am a longtime resident of Brooklyn, New York and of the Fourth Avenue area. I've also had businesses in Sunset Park as well. I'm very familiar with the site, so I wanted to hop on and give support for the development. I've noticed that a lot more and more, there's been beautification of Fourth Avenue, and it seems like this is another opportunity for us to do so. Currently, the space, as Alap had mentioned, is extremely underused. There are not the most, you know, ideal people that use that area at nighttime. And I think that this would give an opportunity for the community to really benefit from, you know, like they were saying before in the original plans to have entrepreneurs have the opportunities to use the space again, with the train station being way more accessible. I think that, you know, the area is coming along more and more, and these type of projects are what need, are what needed in the area to, you know, effectively bring in more money and have people with the right mentalities and kind of lead Brooklyn into like a higher, you know, beautification standpoint. And I really like the idea that there's going to be low income housing. You know, I come from meager background myself and a lot of the those that I've seen are going up on Fourth Avenue are not offering low income housing for residents. And, you know, it's, it's a mixed bag in New York. And I think that, you know, we have to have development where there's representation for everybody. So, you know, I definitely went to log on and give my support for the project. Just as a, from a community based. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. James. Questions from the commission. Again, thank you. Our next speaker will be Shabazz Stewart.
Hi, this is Shabazz. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Um, my name is Shabazz Stewart. I'm the founder and CEO of UNI. And I really urge the committee to support this project for, for two reasons. One professional and related to MI advocacy and one personal. Um, foremost, this is going to be the site of a world-class bike parking station. New York desperately needs more bike parking. One out of every four households in New York has experienced the theft of a bike. And this issue is particularly is particularly devastating for working cyclists and those who, those essential workers who rely on their bike for a means of economic mobility. So this is something that I'm really excited about, and New York's really excited about. But more profoundly, as someone who was born and raised and reared in Brooklyn, affordable housing is just very important to me. I lived in affordable housing for most of my childhood. It's something that's near and dear to my heart. And so when we talk about the creation of 35 affordable housing units, it gets me very excited and it's very personal to me. And so, look, I think from that perspective, this is a win, win, win for the community and for Brooklyn overall. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. And I had not been aware of the statistic, but unfortunately count myself among the one in four. Thank you for providing that information. Questions from the commission. Again, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Our next speaker is Joshua Pierre.
Hi, do you guys hear me?
Yes, Mr. Pierre.
Good morning. Thank you all for having me. My name is Joshua Pierre. I'm 23 years old and I'm a freelance artist. I grew up in Brooklyn to an immigrant Haitian mother, who were very poor and often struggled with housing. I've lived in shelters, group homes, bounced from place to place and was in a foster care system. This housing instability greatly affected my ability to keep a job, my success as a student, and my overall mental health. A person's home is their foundation and that should never be in jeopardy. This is why I think an affordable housing project with units of space for people in desperate need is crucial. The pandemic stripped, stripped many people of their jobs and rent, as we know in New York City, is notorious for being very expensive, especially for low income families like my own. A one bedroom apartment for $600 to $700 would be tremendous for someone like me. For my line of work, a stable place to stay is crucial because the majority of my work is done from home. Without adequate studio space, I cannot work on commissions for clients. In closing, I'm 100% in support of Totem in this affordable housing project. And I believe it's a step in the right direction of ending the housing crisis in New York. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Pierre, and especially for such personal testimony. If I might ask, what is your medium as an artist?
Oil, paint and acrylic mostly.
Nice. I wish that we had visual capabilities so that we could ask to see some of your work. Questions from the
Blank concrete walls.
You could catch me on Instagram at Joshua and Pierre. I have a lot of my work there.
Thank you for that. Questions from the commission. Again, thank you, Mr. Pierre. Our next speaker is Sam Nidenberg.
Good morning. Can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, first of all, Happy New Year and thank you commissioners and Totem for the presentation and the time. I just wanted to voice my support for this project. I too have been following the project for a while now and also, you know, Totem in general, and think that their approach towards community-based development is, you know, very responsible and thoughtful. I think it addresses a lot of the issues that we face in terms of affordability and, you know, job creation in the neighborhood and community. So a project like this, you know, would also would provide more affordable housing, which is great, increase the quality housing in the neighborhood. And then also provide jobs both on a temporary and permanent basis from the construction all the way through the, you know, full staffing of the building once complete, as well as the, you know, jobs created at the retail level. In addition, it feels like it'll provide a lot of amenities to the neighborhood as well, both from a services perspective with the retail parking and the increased accessibility to the subway station. And just seems like a logical site to approve this rezoning, given how underutilized it is, as those have mentioned. So as a born and bred Brooklynite, you know, I think this is a very responsible, appropriate kind of a project to address a lot of the issues facing the community. That's really it. I yield my time.
Thank you. Questions from the commission. Again, thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is William Wilkins.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name, as stated, my name is William Wilkins. I'm the Director of Economic Development and Housing for the Local Development Corporation of East New York, which gives me a unique perspective in housing development projects. Therefore, without hesitation or reservation, I support the reference land use item. This project represents a bottom up approach to development by bringing into account local stakeholders' sensitivity and direct needs to making improvements to their community's housing stock. To this point, 737 To this point, 737 Fourth Avenue will dramatically increase the affordable housing stock in Community Board 7 by 30%, which is critical in preserving the ability for local residents to reside in their community long term, which is paramount. We also mentioned the importance of bike parking. I also want to highlight parking. I've had meetings in and around Fourth Avenue, and I've driven around for at least 45 minutes to try to find street parking. This project also is bringing into the envelope 52 needed parking spaces. Additionally, the building design and green amenities offered are top shelf. Also, the commitment to hire locally for construction labor ensures the building will be built with exacting detail and foster local pride. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, and for bringing the LDC perspective to the conversation. Questions for Mr. Wilkins? Again, thank you. And our next speaker is Nelson Santana.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for the commission for taking our testimonies. I'm Nelson Santana. I have been a resident in Sunset Park since 1982. I have been fortunate that I've actually been, I went to school, received an education, et cetera. But what I like most about this particular project, why I support it, is because it's also creating affordable housing for people. So even though I know I will not benefit from it per se, I do believe it is important to create affordable housing. I am someone who has benefited from it in the past, and I know just how much that can help families, working class mothers, fathers, the children. And, you know, this is an awesome neighborhood. I love my neighborhood and care so much for it. And I do not support all development projects, but I truly believe that the developers Totum that they are, they actually have the community in their minds and in their hearts for this particular project. And, you know, just the fact, and some of the points have already been noted, such as how they've considered the parking spaces, et cetera. And, you know, just someone who's a university professor librarian, I, you know, it's just the way they take the urban perspective and take it into account, again, creating the parking spots, et cetera. You know, just also, I apologize, I have a cough, and just thinking about the urban space and making this, at least that space where the construction will be, making it livelier than what it is now, and not just have, I don't know, I want to call it a wasted space, but just bring more life to it. And again, I think this will help solve some of the issues, being that the government is not always creating, has not created and will not create all the necessary affordable housing. Thank you so much, and I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Santana, and feel better with a cough. Questions? Okay, we can spare your voice. Thank you again. Our next speaker is Rohan Defreitas.
Hi, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Yes, hi, my name is Rohan Defreitas. I'm representing Crescent Consulting. I'm here in support of this project, and in, I think, the reason why I'm strongly supporting projects like this is because projects like this bring serious economic opportunity to communities that they're being built in. And it's no secret that the development team contacted me to work with them in designing and building and crafting MWBE, as well as a local hiring program, to ensure that the local community has access and opportunities in every economic facet of this project. Crescent has been involved in many community-based projects throughout the borough of Brooklyn and has seen where residents of the Brooklyn community has had access and training and contracting opportunities in developing projects like this. I look forward to the opportunity to supporting a project like this and urge you, in your greatest extent possible, that you support and pass the approval for this project. We will be working very closely with other community-based organizations to ensure that all of the residents of Brooklyn, especially the this, the area where this project's being built, are afforded employment and contracting opportunities in a time when we are faced with this pandemic situation, where we're faced with minority and women-owned businesses and local businesses are facing serious economic challenges, and projects like this bring forth opportunities where they definitely will have an opportunity to sustain their businesses. I thank you again and look forward to you supporting a project like this.
Thank you. Commissioner Knight, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for Ryan. What are your goals for the project with respect to both hiring and contracting?
So at this point, we are actually looking at the statewide and citywide goals that we are looking to enforce on the project, which is at this point anywhere between 25 to 30% for employment on the project, and similarly on the contracting component. But those goals are going to be determined based on the type of construction disciplines that are being put in place on the project. What I mean by that is, is it going to be a concrete building versus a steel building? That's going to vary in terms of how we proceed, proceed forward with the goals we're going to look to establish for the project. Thanks.
Other questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Aaron Schiffman. Ryan, could you check if Aaron Schiffman remains in the room?
Aaron Schiffman is in the room. I've invited him to unmute his thing. Let's see what the-
Hello, can you hear me?
There we go.
Yes.
Sorry, I was having some technical issues. Hi, my name is Aaron Schiffman. I'm the Executive Director of Brooklyn Workforce Innovations, and we have joined the project team of Totum to work on local hiring and access for the community to gain opportunities around some of the construction jobs that Rohan and Crescent just mentioned, as well as ensure that there are pathways to training opportunities so that community members who are interested in the employment opportunities but lack the skills, Brooklyn Workforce Innovations will have the opportunity to bridge that gap. That is the mission of our organization. We've been doing it for 20 years, and it's an activity that we feel strongly that Totum has invested time and planning energy into, and we look forward to sort of forging a relationship if the commission moves forward with their approval and the overall zoning is approved and the opportunity to create affordable housing, but also local jobs that this site is afforded to the community. Where we work with a lot of developers who give lip service to the opportunity to provide local access, and I think the Totum team has gone significantly beyond that in terms of their engagement, not just with our organization, but with also other local community members. And we look forward to forging a more formal relationship with them when the full understanding of what the context of the construction jobs and other permanent jobs will be at the site. We've worked with members of the Totum team in the past and had significant successes in putting low-income unemployed workers to work and through training, and we look forward to being able to do that here at this site in Sunset Park. Thank you very much. I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Schiffman. And at this point, I will again note that we are getting near the end of the public hearing, and if people have not registered to speak but have decided during the course of the hearing that they would like to, I would ask that you now register with the instructions on how to register, either online or via phone, at www.myc.gov/nycengage. Our next speaker is Peter Mateos.
I don't see Mr. Mateos in the room.
Okay, then we will move to Isaiah Thomas.
Hello?
Yes, welcome.
How are you guys? Name's Isaiah Thomas. I'm a lifelong resident of Brooklyn, and I just wanted to advocate for this project as a young person who's trying to have an affordable home and have housing in Brooklyn. Just having this site turned into affordable housing where it's much needed and replacing a Dunkin' Donuts in a parking lot. I really appreciate it. I just wanted to show my support for this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Thomas? Again, thank you for your testimony, and we'll now go back to Audrey James. Ryan, is either Audrey James or any other folks? Are there any other folks remaining who would like to testify?
No, we reached out to the folks who were either missing from the room and haven't heard back, so.
Okay, so with that, this public hearing is closed.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers 23 and 24, CD 10, calendar number 23, C190447ZMK. Calendar number 24, N180448ZRK. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 9114-Fifth Avenue rezoning.
Our first speaker will be Richard Lobel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Good morning, Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, P.C., for the applicant. I may take just a moment to echo the chair's statements with regards to Bruce Jacobs. He spoke in opposition to nearly every application that we presented to the commission, and we would not have had it any other way. We have several attorneys in the office who, you know, who communicated it with him and formed friendships with him, and so we appreciate, you know, the fact that he was involved and spirited in his discussion and made us look at things in a different way. So we sincerely, you know, offer condolences and we'll miss him. Madam Chair, we're here for 9114 Fifth Avenue. The application in front of you is for rezoning from a CA2 district to an R7A with a C24. You can see the map in front of you. The zoning area is somewhat of an L-shaped rezoning. This would entail roughly 11 or parts of 12 lots on the block. These lots are currently devoted to either open uses and parking or residential or mixed-use buildings. The residential uses here, where all of the buildings constitute either residential or residential with commercial, are currently non-conforming in the CA2. Next slide. So the next slide is the land use map, which you can see this built, this block is somewhat bifurcated between the open and residential uses to the southeast, as well as the, and the manufacturing and commercial uses to the north and northwest. Also on the map, you can see that there are some districts, R6A, R7B districts, which permit for somewhat higher density. Here was chosen to somewhat mirror some of the higher density in the immediate area of the block. To the east, you can see a school in the R6B. Despite the R6B designation, the school here is at a height of roughly 70 feet. To the south, you can see there's an office building of seven stories, and to the west, there are residential buildings, longstanding mixed-use and fully residential buildings of six stories or greater at heights of 68 feet. So the R7A here at a height of 95 feet is appropriate and contextual with either these existing zoning districts or these longstanding non-compliant buildings. Next slide. So the next slide is pictures of the development site. You can see the development site, as we're facing it on Slide 1, is currently devoted to open uses such as parking. There is a lot around the corner when we reach that slide, and you can, please feel free to forward through the pictures, which is a picture of the 92nd Street side. That side is devoted to used car sales. So the rezoning here is truly intended to allow for more meaningful development and residential uses on the block. Although I see our timer says 10 minutes.
I'm afraid that that is a mistake, Mr. Lobel, as it's not a team presentation. So at this point, I would ask the secretary to stop the clock. And also, I would ask production to please allow me to see the participants. At this point, I see only the clock, and so I cannot see if commissioners have raised hands. Okay, I now see the commission and ask if there are any questions for Mr. Lobel. Then I'll thank you for your testimony and move on to the next speaker, who is Ankeet M. Ryan, if you could check if Ankeet M. remains in the meeting?
Yes, Ankeet is here, and we will invite her to unmute her microphone or his microphone. Ankeet, you can unmute your microphone.
Good morning, everyone. I just wanted to wish everyone a Happy New Year and the best of health for 2021.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Faye Anne Bataun.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
This is Faye Bataun from Sheldon Lobel. I was just signed on part of the applicant team, just in case Richard had technical difficulties, so I have nothing further to say for the application.
Yes, Commissioner Levin?
Thank you. I actually had a follow-up question that I didn't, was, I was too slow on the draw to ask Mr. Lobel, so perhaps I'd ask you. And that is about the recommendation from the Borough President that the out parcels be removed from the rezoning. Does the applicant team have any thoughts on that recommendation?
And I, okay, can you hear me?
Sorry. Yes.
I think there was, it was raised also at the review session. Right now, those were added because they were part, you know, this rezoning will make it a conforming use. Currently, those buildings are non-conforming, so that's why they were included within the rezoning, but they're not applicant-owned.
So would the applicant have any objection to removing them from the rezoned area?
I don't believe so, and I think it was also raised that possibly the commission would be in favor of making it R6A, R6B instead, not to incentivize redevelopment on the site, but we don't own any of those sites, or the applicant doesn't own any of the sites or control them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm glad that Ms. Bataun was able to join to answer Commissioner Levin's I will note that those are the only speakers who are signed up on this item, but-
Chair, Commissioner Dweck has his hand up?
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Levin hit my question. Thank you.
So Ryan, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak during the course of the hearing?
No further speakers on this.
Okay, then this public meeting is closed.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 25, CDs 10 and 11, C210067HUM, a public hearing in the matter of an application for an amendment to the existing urban renewal plan concerning the East Harlem Urban Renewal Plan Extension.
Okay, on this, Ryan, I would ask for a clarification. We know that team presentations are done when there are teams of at least three speakers. We have-
Speaker number two signed up inadvertently as a separate speaker and is part of the applicant team.
I did give you correspondence, but that's, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, so we will have a 10-minute presentation by an applicant team comprised of James Hall, Ariel Goldberg, and Vianda Simmons. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Lago, Vice Chair Knuckles, and City Planning Commissioners. Happy New Year. My name is Vianda Simmons. I'm the Director of the Manhattan Planning Division at HPD. And I'm joined by my colleagues, James Hall, Manhattan Planner, and Ariel Goldberg, Director of Land Use and Policy in the Office of Neighborhood and Strategies. The application before you is the 16th Amendment to the Harlem, East Harlem Urban Renewal Plan to extend the plan's duration for 40 years. Urban renewal plan amendments are subject to EULAR and this application certified into EULAR on September 14th. We presented.
I'm not, you can't see me, can you?
No, we can't.
I'm gonna come on another instrument. I'll be right with you.
Please continue.
Oh, sorry.
And if I could ask production, please mute those who aren't speaking. Thank you.
We presented before the community board several times before EULAR. And subsequently, once the project certif, the EULAR application certified into EULAR. Generally, urban renewal law gives the city the ability to acquire and convey sites for redevelopment in accordance with an urban renewal plan. Depending on the plan, this could be certain land uses or, in this case, for the plan, additional design controls. The Harlem, East Harlem Urban Renewal Plan was established in 1968 and subsequently amended 15 times over the past four decades. The plan expired on December 19th, 2020. The most recent amendment, the 15th Amendment, was approved by the City Planning Commission and City Council in 2008. The 15th Amendment inserted a number of site-specific design controls into the plan. And the extension of this plan for 40 years will keep these design controls intact. The urban renewal area is generally bounded by East 106 Street to the south, FDR Drive to the east, Madison Park Lexington and Fifth Avenues to the west, and the Harlem River Drive at East 132nd Street to the north, which was, you will see on the map on the following slide. Please advance the slide. And advance the slide to the next slide, please. Thank you. Though the boundary encompasses a large area, only sites that are listed in Exhibit A of the Urban Renewal Plan and that the city acquires and conveys are subject to the restrictions in the plan. I will now turn over the presentation to James Hall.
Thanks, Vianda. Could we go back one slide, please? Thank you. So as Vianda mentioned, the plan has been amended 15 times, most recently in 2008. This amendment included several site-specific design controls that affect parcels still under city ownership. The application is an extension of the plan's duration for 40 years. No substantive changes or project are proposed as part of the application. The goal of the land use action is to facilitate the preservation of the site-specific design controls that currently exist in the plan, which will be detailed on the following slide. Advance the slide, please. Thank you. So this table highlights some of the design controls that would remain active if the plan is extended. Some of the design controls also comport with the stated goals in the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan. For example, the plan requires the construction of at least 700 housing units on particular sites, which would not be required under zoning. An active plan places a height limit on certain sites. Under zoning, the height limit is governed by the sky exposure plane. Another important component is the public open space requirement within the plan, which would require in total at least 12,500 square feet of open space with benches, illumination, as well as programming on certain sites. There is no similar mechanism through the existing underlying zoning. So now I'll turn it over to Ariel Goldberg, and you can advance the slide. Thank you.
Thank you, James. So this slide shows the boundary of the urban renewal area. Again, although the boundary encompasses a large area, only sites that are listed in Exhibit A are, and that are acquired and conveyed by the city are subject to the plan. And you can see the individual sites outlined in dark green. Next slide, please. So again, urban renewal plans are subject to the Uniform Land Use Review Process, excuse me, Procedure. And this proposed amendment would extend the Harlem, East Harlem Urban Renewal Plan's duration to 40 years from the approval of this 16th Amendment, and that's continuous from the prior expiration of the plan. Thank you. I believe that's the final slide, and we're happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Deloos.
Thanks for the presentation. I'm just wondering, and you guys know what the process was back in 2008 when those more substantive changes were made for getting input into those changes? And, you know, whether there's been any concern raised by the, by the local community about any of those provisions, given the remaining sites that need to be developed?
Hi, this is Vianda. I will respond to that. There was points of agreement that were really galvanized by the entire community, including elected officials, Community Board 11, many community-based organizations, to come up with a series of requests and requirements for the development of what was termed the MEC site, East 125th Street Development, and that basically stands for the Multi Entertainment Center. And so those agreements discussed, as James mentioned, unit counts that would be total 1,000 units. There would be requirements for community facility space, approximately 15,000 square feet. There would be open space included with these design controls. There would be commercial space included, approximately 20,000 square feet. And then again, you know, as the height limits were discussed, there are always concerns and legitimate concerns about having buildings that are in context with the neighbor, surrounding neighbor, neighboring buildings. The three blocks that encompass the points of agreement that were listed in these design controls encompass, is bounded by 125th Street, 127th Street to the north, between Second and Third Avenues. They're largely vacant and, you know, just really an eyesore for the larger community. Again, there are many concerns that came up during that time period and this collaboration between the community board, the community elected officials, to confirm that a lot of these design controls were in place, really focused on many needs that the community requested.
Thank you. Well, looking forward to hearing what others may have to say. Thanks.
Other questions from the commission? Vice Chair Knuckles.
I had my raised hand, but perhaps you can see it. First of all, I'm doing this on my phone and my audio was, was good until this particular presentation started and it went way down. So I'm just wondering, can anything be done without impacting my colleagues unduly? But I'm having a hard time hearing. What's that?
Vice Chair, we will have production reach out to you directly to see what can be done to improve the volume of your audio.
Okay, and while I have the opportunity, could I just ask HPD, from its perspective regarding East Harlem, aside from the MEC site that was just mentioned, and of course, the site at 112th and Madison, which is now being developed by Ellen M. and Jonathan Rose Organization, are there any other significant-sized parcels in East Harlem that it envisions for development?
Yes, Vice Chair Knuckles, I hope you can hear me. Thank you for your question. We have quite a few developments that are in the pre-Eular stages. And we've presented those developments to the community board. That includes the, a great project that will focus on supportive housing needs and that will be developed by the Fortune Society. And that, that development focuses on formerly incarcerated individuals as well as really low-income residents. And so that is a much-needed housing development that is underway in Community Board 11 along East 123rd Street. We also have another project that is being advanced by Ascendant and Ali Forni. And that site is focusing on another really important population, formerly homeless youth who really need housing. Ali Forni has been instrumental throughout the city in providing vital services to youth and youth who are coming out of foster care and in need of housing and developing independence into adulthood. So that is another development that we're advancing in East Harlem that will hopefully in the next couple of years be developed as well. We also have a new typology of shared housing that will provide housing services to smaller households and is a pilot project that the city is advancing. And so we additionally have another project called Last Recess that will provide low-income housing to the East Harlem community. So we're quite busy working with the community board and presenting to the community board to understand the needs of East Harlem and really advance, advancing great projects that actually focus on lower-income residents.
Thank you for the update.
Commissioner Bernie.
Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. Could you just explain briefly what would be the implications of not extending the renewal plan? And I note that the community board recommended an extension limited to 12 years. And I note that the, we're talking largely about city-owned sites and one would assume that the city controls the destiny of those sites anyway and may not need the help of a renewal plan. So could you explain what would happen if we don't extend it?
So, hi, thank you, Commissioner, for your question. I think the best way to think about the plan is really in three buckets. Bucket one are sites that were acquired and conveyed already, subject to the plan. Bucket two would be sites that the city has already acquired but have not been conveyed. So those are the MEC parcels that we were talking about, the ones that are still in city ownership. And bucket three would be sites that are acquisition parcels that have not been acquired and therefore not been conveyed. So for the most part, for bucket one, the site's already acquired and conveyed. There isn't really an impact. They were conveyed, subject to different plans, and most likely expired. The plan most likely expired for those. For the city-owned sites, it's true, they are city-owned. The kinds of restrictions that are in the urban renewal plan are somewhat atypical. They go above and beyond the kinds of restrictions that we typically see in urban renewal plans. Many urban renewal plans focus more on use. So that's the kind of thing that when we convey, we make the sites subject to the plan. We don't typically provide that level of detailed restrictions. In closing documents, we simply make the sites subject to existing documents like an urban renewal plan. So I think we are trying really to honor the commitments of the plan. Several years ago, there were a lot of concerns about expiring urban renewal plans. The city council held hearings about this. And so we're really trying to also be responsive to that and extend the plan prior to the expiration to keep those restrictions in place.
And why do you think the community board wants to limit it to 12 years rather than the 40?
So I should say the community board was actually quite split on this. Some people wanted to restrict it to 12 years, some wanted to approve it as is. I think, you know, the typical plan extension, we were asked to look into typical plan extensions by the community board, and we did. And the typical plan extension actually is for 40 years. So I think there were some people who wanted it to be shorter, I think, to try to prod, you know, the process on. And also because that's, you know, 40 years is a long period of time. But many others felt that it's important to keep these restrictions in place for 40 years.
It would save you having to come back in 12 years and ask for it again, I suppose.
I think that's true, but I think the point is, you know, we would be conveying those sites within that time most likely and subject to the plan that's in place at that time. And so, you know, typically those restrictions would run coterminous with the plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the commission? Seeing none, I will thank the applicant team. And we'll ask Ryan if others who had not registered but decided to speak during the course of the hearing have signed up.
Just get the. No, we don't have any further speakers on this.
Okay, then this hearing is closed. Oh, yes, Commissioner Bernie.
I'm sorry, I just had one more question, and I may not be reading it correctly. But is one of the requirements of the plan actually a downzoning of certain sites? And I'm just wondering if that's the case and whether that's desirable.
I could ask that the applicant team be again unmuted?
So there isn't an actual downzoning in the plan. However, the restrictions in the plan, there are height restrictions, SAPAT restrictions that are, that are stricter than the plan. Excuse me, than the existing zoning.
Okay, so, but there isn't specifically a reduction in the FAR for any particular site?
There are height restrictions. I believe there are some density restrictions. So functionally, the outcome is a, are smaller, shorter buildings that are more in context.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But it's not a neighborhood rezoning?
No, no.
Other questions from the commission since we have the applicant team available? Okay, so second time, thank you to the applicant team. And Ryan, if you could check on, on sign-ins.
No further speakers?
Okay, so this hearing is closed and we'll move on to the next one.
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 26, CD 2, C200169ZFM. A public hearing in the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning 65 Spring Street.
First speaker will be Alexia Landisman. For three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please begin.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you. Please begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Hello?
Would you please stop the clock, Madam Secretary, as it's evident that Ms. Landisman is not hearing us?
Yes, I can hear you now, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Great, please begin.
Hello, my name is Alexia Landisman, and I alongside my colleague Marvin Midster will be presenting on behalf of 65 Spring Street. I will be presenting the first part of the presentation and Marvin will finish us off. We respectfully request that all questions be posed at the end of the entire presentation. Next slide. The site is a five-story mixed residential and commercial.
Ms. Landisman, I have to note that that's only possible in a team presentation, so the questions will be posed to each speaker individually.
Okay, understood. Thank you. The site is a five-story mixed residential and commercial building located within an M15B zoning district. The building is small, having an area of 1,945 square feet. The ground floor is currently being used for two lawful retail spaces, while the top four floors are used for residential. The applicant requested grant of a special permit pursuant to Section 74781 of the zoning resolution to permit a ground floor and cellar extension of the site for commercial use. of the zoning resolution to permit a ground-floor and cellar extension of the site for commercial use. Next slide. The land use map shows that the site is situated in the commercial area with many ground-floor retail spaces surrounding it. Next slide. The property has separate entrances for both retail and tenant residence, I'm sorry, for both retail tenants and residents. The Landmarks Preservation Commission requires that two storefront entrances be maintained. If you look at photo 11, it is the gated entrance to the rear yard located on Lafayette Street, and it has a prescriptive easement. Next slide. The owner is proposing an extension of the ground floor and cellar by 15 feet to the rear property line, increasing the floor area of the building by 719 square feet. The first floor will be increased by 344 square feet and allow the creation of two handicap-accessible bathrooms, one for each retail facility. The lightly shaded portion is the existing retail space, and the darker shaded portion is the proposed extension. Next slide. The cellar will be extended by 375 square feet, and a rear exit stairway will be created leading to the first floor. The cellar would be used by the retail tenants for accessory storage space and mechanical space. Next slide. So the ZR Section 74781 requires the applicant to undertake and document a six-month marketing effort to rent the subject space to a conforming user at a fair market rent and specifies three marketing methods. Next slide. The first marketing method was through advertising The New York Times and The Villager, which spanned for more than a year. The ads show the rental at $80 a square foot with the cellar for free. Next slide. The second marketing method was listing the space with brokers. In this space, CPex and New, in this case, CPex and Newmark. The Newmark site listing clearly identifies the space as industrial. Three of the four inquiries we received came from Newmark. None of the inquiries proved viable, with one being...
Ms. Landisman, I'm afraid that the time is up. And so we will now turn to questions from the commission.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Levin.
Yes, Ms. Landisman. It seems to me that this is an awful lot of trouble to go through for an extension that really yields two bathrooms and a stairway down to the cellar. Am I correctly understanding the purpose of this application? Why has it decided that bathrooms are what are needed in this space?
Well, I believe that the tenant, the landowner, really wanted to utilize the space. As, you know, he is permitted to expand the building 15 square feet per, you know, as of right. And so I believe that he wanted to reserve the opportunity to do so. And due to the fact that the entire space, as it currently sits on the ground floor, is permitted for retail space, it only seemed fitting that if you were going to expand the building at any point, you needed to allow that, we needed to allow it to be used Group Six, which is why we're doing this.
And bathrooms are important for what kind of tenants?
Well, I mean, ultimately, I think that the owner is trying to stay competitive in this market. And right now, the tenants share a bathroom. It's not exactly a great layout. And I believe that he wanted to permit both retail tenants to maintain their own facility.
Okay, is there any thought of putting in eating or drinking establishment?
So Marvin will definitely get into more of that on his side of the presentation. But I will say that the owner has no current plans to convert the space into an eating or dining establishment. But they do want the permission to do so if need be in the future.
Thank you.
Other questions? Then thank you, Ms. Landisman. And we will follow our normal procedure of beginning with speakers in opposition of Frederica Siegel.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. CB2 always makes a big effort to review the 74781 applications with a fresh eye. But there are always the same issues, the legibility of the ads. In the case of the ads that they showed, the New York Times one was completely illegible. The rent being asked for the space is always too high. I don't know how all of the individual applicants come up with $80, but it never works. And also the outdated list of industry contacts, which never yields any interest whatsoever. But unique to this application was the fact that, number one, the space that was being advertised had yet to be built. Number two, that it's only 354 square feet, and the space that they were advertising is the rear yard extension only, not attached to any existing space. The ad that they showed you, the Newmark ad, mistakenly lists the building as a multifamily for lease. So, oh, and as Commissioner Levin pointed out, we also questioned the need for two ADA-accessible bathrooms. So in the end, CB2 recommended denial due to the flawed requirements and the flawed execution of the good faith marketing effort. Although we did not believe that the proposed use would harm the neighborhood character if the following stipulations were included: no eating and drinking, keeping the two stores separate per LPC, a tenant protection plan submitted to DOB that includes maintaining residential emergency egress and managing the trash, a plan for safe evacuation and protection of the adjoining building, documentation for a legal easement, make sure that's in place, and finally, no mechanical equipment to be put on the roof of the extension since that would disturb the residential neighbors. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Siegel. And I'll turn it over to the commission for questions. Commissioner Deloos.
I appreciate Ms. Siegel coming to testify and raising the concerns about this application. I guess my question is, and especially since the community has watched these so closely, and I can't recall a time, and this is something we can talk more about during the review session, where an applicant has advertised for the special permit for a space that hasn't been built yet. Is, I'm just wondering if she has a recollection in her time, whether that's happened?
We have no recollection of that. One, you could say that one advancement in their advertising was that they were only advertising, they were only charging rent for the ground floor. And we've had applicants in the past who've charged rent for the ground floor and the cellar. But it's like the size of a tiny studio apartment, and they're advertising for a manufacturing tenant. So the entire, the entire thing just seemed doomed from the start. I hope that answers your question. The answer is no, we haven't seen that, unbuilt space.
And the department can follow up at the post here and follow up, Commissioner. Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Ms. Siegel, since you're here, it's been a while since we've seen one of CB2's recommendations on this. And as you point out, you routinely oppose eating and drinking establishments. Can you remind us what the basic opposition is to eating and drinking establishments in these kinds of spaces?
Well, it has to do with the, with the impact on the residents. And that's the basic, that's the basic issue.
Okay, the residents of that particular building?
No, the residential character of the neighborhood.
Okay. Is there a distinction between bars and restaurants in your experience?
Well, we were, there's drinking establishments and there's eating and drinking establishments.
Right.
And I imagine, sorry?
Is there a particular, among those uses, are there ones that you're particularly concerned about?
I would say bars are in the first circle of hell, and eating and drinking goes out from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the metaphor, which has us all thinking back to our high school reading lists. Other questions for Ms. Siegel? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, and we do continue to hope that applicants will get good advice when they embark on these applications.
Thank you. I'll note that we have just a few more speakers on this matter. And so if there are folks listening or watching who haven't registered to speak but have decided during the course of the hearing that you'd like to, please do so now. And you can find instructions on how to register, either online or via phone at www.nyc.gov/nycengage. And we'll now turn it over to Marvin Mitzner.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to pick up where Alexia left off, if you don't mind. If we can go to slide number nine on the presentation. Yes, there was some comment about the Newmark posting. But if you notice on the lower right corner, the posting is clearly identified as industrial, and Newmark is known for its industrial leasing. And furthermore, all the responses we got, which were not good responses, came from the Newmark posting. And next slide, please. The third, the third effort and outreach, the third effort and marketing effort was to send letters to the nine identified industry groups. The letter specifically identifies the spaces to be built. And there is nothing within the statute that prevents us from exercising marketing efforts for space to be built, the new space. And that's what this is, and that's what that was identified as. Next slide, please. Now, as was mentioned by Frederica, the community board found that it was a flawed requirement in the good faith marketing program. But the program is articulated in statute itself. It identifies all three elements of the marketing effort. We agree with everything that the community board recommended, except for the first two. Essentially, the prohibition against eating and drinking. Existing retail space can't be used for eating and drinking as of right, right now. So the only space we're talking about is a small additional space. And if we want to convert eating and drinking, that's just a minimal extension. We have no plans for that now, but we would like the option in the future if that has to occur. Secondly, to keep the two stores separate, they are separate stores. LPC will not allow us to combine the storefronts. We have no plans to combine, but if we do, we'd have to go back to Landmark for that. Next slide, please. This is, this slide just shows that we've maintained the five-story B rest after the completion of the extension. Next slide, please. The borough president recommended approval, but had two conditions. Next slide, please. The first condition was to complete the good faith marketing. Now, I'm not sure what she means by that. We had a complete good faith marketing effort. It extended for more than a year, rather than six months. And it was consistent with the prior applications and the city planning guidelines. The price per square foot was only on the first-floor space and at the cellar space. We believe that we comply with the statutory requirements. The second condition was about open violations which relate to space of the neighbor's building that we have agreed to clear up and take care of.
Time?
Thank you. Now, questions from the commission? Thank you, Mr. Mitzner.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Manakshi Myers.
Don't see Manakshi Myers in the speaker's room.
Would you be able to check, Ryan, if there are any other folks who have signed up?
No, Madam Chair, no further speakers on this.
Okay, so with that, this public hearing is closed.
Borough of Queens, calendar number 27, CB13C200190ZMQ, a public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 214-32 Hillside Avenue rezoning.
Our first speaker will be Richard Lobel.
Have Richard in here?
Please go ahead, Mr. Lobel.
I don't see Richard in the room, or Mr. Lobel in the room.
Okay, then we will move on to Intaqab Ahmed.
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Mr. Lobel, I apologize, I was just unmuted.
Okay. Richard is there, our attorney.
Here, you can go back to Richard, then.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, good morning, Richard Lobel, Shutt Lobel PC. I'm here to discuss 21432 Hillside Avenue and the Hillside Avenue rezoning. Next slide. So the rezoning is for rezoning from R2 to R2 with a C23 overlay. You will notice from the zoning map here that approximately 10 of the 16 blocks on the south side of Hillside Avenue in the immediate area have commercial overlays. So this is a commercial overlay rezoning, considered to be a fairly minor rezoning, and one which was embraced by the community board by a vote of 43 to 1. Next slide. So the next slide merely demonstrates the boundary of the rezoning. The rezoning will encompass the development site, which is roughly 11,000 square feet. You can see it on the left side, highlighted in red, as well as five additional sites fronting on Hillside Avenue on this block front. Next slide. So the next slide is the land use map. And what it will show is two things. The first is the development site itself, which is currently a vacant site. It is historically, since 1992, been the subject of a BSA variance application, which was granted and which permitted auto sales and repair at the site. This use has been discontinued as of 2018, although it has a legal ability to use it at that site through 2022. The remainder of this block front is occupied by two-story buildings, the first floor of which are occupied by commercial uses. Those are the commercial uses. And the upper stories of which are occupied by residential uses. So the block front here is really an R2 block front with a commercial overlay, without an actual commercial overlay right now. All of these commercial uses will become conforming commercial uses, assuming that the rezoning is adopted. Next slide. So on the three attached slides, and you can feel free to forward through these three slides, you can see the ground floor commercial uses on the surrounding lots, as well as the existing discontinued auto-related use on the corner. The proposal, and you can feel free to forward through to the first plan, will allow for ground floor retail in the form of a pharmacy, roughly 6,900 square feet. And the upper story would be occupied by approximately 2,400 square feet of office space, which would house the offices for Farbest Pharmaceuticals. This is a New York local pharmaceutical business. Their administrative offices would be operated here. And the local community was quite favorable of having a local retail pharmacy to allow for greater goods and services to be provided to the surrounding area. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions from the commission? If, Commissioner Deloos.
Mr. Lobel, do you, how long has the applicant owned the site? And do you, is there a lease or intended lease in place for the potential future use?
So the applicant has owned the site for a number of years. They're actually on the call as well and are available to answer the commission's questions. But the applicant owns and intends to use the site for their own use. So Farbest is actually the applicant here who would proceed to populate the ground floor here with a pharmacy, as they've done in other locations within the city, and to allow for their administrative offices above.
Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Rampershad.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for the presentation. I guess a question for the owner. With regards to the parking, is this for employees?
Actually, Commissioner Rampershad, the owner will be testifying, will be coming up as, I believe, the next presenter.
Okay, all right. So I had a question about the parking, whether or not it's for employees or is it for public?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. There's actually no required parking on the site. But upon discussions with Community Board 13, there are parking spaces that are now attached to the site. So there are five parking spaces. Those are all for employee parking. The understanding here is that there are curb cuts currently along Hillside Avenue, which serviced the site. These would be closed up as part of the application. And so there'll be additional street parking available. The Community Board was satisfied with the additional parking spaces generated on Hillside, as well as the fact that this is going to serve many residents of the local community who would be walking to the site.
Okay, the only reason I brought it up because I'm looking at the cellar parking layout. And if it was for, you know, anyone just coming in and the spaces are already taken, I don't see that much maneuverability for so many guys.
Yeah, no, that's definitely the case. There was some reconfiguration of the parking. I would just note that the Community Board expressed a preference to have loading come off of Hillside Avenue. And so there was some modification of the site designed to allow that. We've been, you know, had a great relationship with the Community Board as far as the application, with everything from lighting and security to deliveries. So we're really looking forward to a successful application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the Commission? Thank you, Mr. Lobel. Our next speaker is Intaqab Ahmed.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, the Commission, on behalf of the property owner, Mr. Islam. And I'm Intaqab Ahmed, thanking you for the opportunity. And we'd just like to add a couple of points here. The rezoning application we have submitted, once this goes through, this will be a great opportunity for the community, for the services, because we are bringing in a pharmacy supermarket setup. And also, at the same time, there will be a lot of job opening. So from these both aspects, providing service and employment opportunity, I think this will be a great project and we'd appreciate your cooperations.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed. Questions from the Commission? Thank you. Our next speaker will be Munir Islam.
I don't see Munir Islam in the room. Let me just check, sure. Yep, not here.
Okay, I'll note that we're coming near the end of the testimony. And so if anyone hasn't registered but has decided during the course of this hearing that they'd like to speak, please register now. Finding instructions on how to register, whether online or via phone, at www.nyc.gov/nycengage. Our next speaker will be Frank Noriega.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Frank Noriega. I'm from Sheldon Lobel as well. I was really more on the line to make sure that there was no technical difficulties with Richard. But I am happy to answer any other additional questions if there needs to be, if the Commissioners have any.
I want to compliment the Law Office on having the built-in suspenders approach. As I suspect folks may realize, we have the same going with the Department of City Planning staff behind the scenes, making sure that we have built-in redundancy. Any questions for Frank Noriega? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ryan, I would ask you to check to see if either Mr. Islam has returned or if there are other people who have signed up.
No further speakers, and it doesn't appear that Munir Islam has returned to the room. Okay.
Okay, then this public hearing is closed.
Borough of Queens, calendar number 28, 29, and 30. CD 14, calendar number 28, N210069HNQ. Calendar number 29, C210070ZMQ. Calendar number 30, N210071BRQ. A public hearing in a matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments. UDAC designation and approval concerning Auburn East.
I will note that we have 33 speakers at this point, signed up for this hearing. And we will begin with a 10-minute presentation by an eight-member applicant team, comprised of David Udelson, David Court, Sarah Levinson, Allison Ruddock, Walter Rodriguez Meyer, Thomas Freeland, Joshua Rhinesmith, and Paris Stroud. I would ask the applicant team to begin.
Happy New Year, Chair Lago and Commissioners. And my name wasn't mentioned, but I'm Kevin Paris, Director for HPD's Queens Planning Team. And despite these difficult times we are all having to endure, today I'm excited to be part of the discussion for the city's plans for Auburn East. Auburn East is a master planned project that will transform an approximate 116-acre vacant oceanfront site into a multifaceted, resilient development. One that will bring the Auburn and Edgemere communities, new mixed-income residential opportunities, diverse neighborhood retail, parking, infrastructure improvements, vast open space, and other community amenities. Next slide please. As referenced at Monday's review session, Auburn East is a continuation of the development across the western and eastern portions of the Auburn Urban Renewal Area and further advances the city's investment into the Rockaways. Next slide please. Auburn East, as presented, will continue the goals envisioned for the eastern Rockaways as an innovative, resilient community and a regional destination. In order to further these goals, HPD seeks approval for a set of actions, which include designation of an urban development action area and UDAC approval for the development site and the nature preserve, as well as a zoning map and text amendment to establish a mixed-use district over a portion of the development site for a proposed microbrewery use. I am joined here with our development partners, who will now discuss the vision for Auburn East that these actions will help facilitate. Next slide please.
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. I'm Sarah Levinson, a Senior Director at LNM Development Partners and the Development Team Lead for the Auburn East Project. The Development Team comprises LNM Development Partners, the Bluestone Organization, and Triangle Equities, three full-service real estate firms that have been working together for over 15 years and have been investing in the Rockaway Peninsula for about a decade, providing high-quality, sustainable, and resilient affordable housing. Next slide please. I'd like to begin this morning with the presentation of the nature preserve. Located between Beach 56th Place and Beach 44th Street, the 35-acre nature preserve will provide for a protected ecological space, offering residents and visitors an immersive retreat from the urban surroundings while harboring maritime flora and fauna in a naturalistic landscape. Mapped as parkland as part of the 2003 actions, the area will be restored and be accessible via network of trails, which will enable visitors to experience and learn about the diverse maritime plant communities while minimizing human disturbance of the landscape. The Development Team has been working closely with the Parks Department on a design that is consistent with these principles, but also ensures access through the preserve and also to the boardwalk directly to the south. In addition, the Parks Department is working on strategies to leverage the preserve to support additional community programming and engagement. Preserve restoration is anticipated to commence in the spring. In addition, an accessory building located across the street from the preserve on the east side of Beach 44th Street, inclusive of an enhanced Parks Department Comfort Station and Parking Lot, will also be provided to support both the preserve and the Development Team to the east. Next slide please. The vision for the development site is guided by the following principles: health and wellness, community and cultural integration, economic diversity and development, and climate resiliency and energy efficiency. Next slide please. Moving to the residential component, the project will comprise 1,650 dwelling units across varying typologies and varying density. 80% will be affordable to a wide range of incomes and affordable homeownership opportunities will be provided. The remaining 20% will be a for sale market rate product. One parking space will be provided for every unit of housing created. Next slide please. Next slide please. One more slide please. Looking at the non-residential component of the project, up to 500,000 square feet of commercial space is permitted and approximately 280,000 square feet is currently anticipated, comprising retail, manufacturing, and community facility uses, inclusive of a community center, the programming of which will be guided by continued community engagement. The project not only strives to address local retail needs, but leverage project opportunities to support existing and new local businesses. The project will provide spaces for a range of commercial opportunities that promote year-round local businesses and jobs, which service local retail needs as well as seasonal destination retail, which will further bolster small business revenue generated by visitors. In addition, the development will provide support for job training programs such as green infrastructure, agricultural building maintenance, and culinary industries. The project will include a variety of retail typologies, including mid-box, ground-floor neighborhood retail opportunities and services to support existing and future residences, and approximately 150 key boutique hotels that would provide year-round programming and jobs, catering, event services, meeting rooms, and a great alternative to JFK accommodations. Seasonal concessions, which are smaller spaces that engage with the beach plaza and the boardwalk, that are bike-friendly, accessible to all, coupled with free outdoor programming, will also be provided. Anchoring our retail corridor is the Rockaway Brewing Company Brewery and Tap House, which will draw patrons and visitors year-round to the project's retail promenade. They are a well-established local craft brewery founded in Rockaway. With the brewery as our anchor tenant, the team can further secure financing and attract local and seasonal retail tenants, bringing new opportunities for long-term and sustainable economic development. You will hear more from the brewery during the public testimony portion of the hearing. Next slide please. In addition to the preserve, there's a variety of opportunities for open and recreation spaces, including an approximately two-acre, not-for-profit-run urban farm and an additional 10 and 1/2 acres of open space. We will be engaging the community in a series of project visiting meetings to better identify desired uses. Next slide please. This is a conceptual rendering looking north up the retail corridor, representing how the retail and open space strategies come together. You can also see the residential is pulled north away from the boardwalk and steps down in density as you get closer to the water. I'll now turn this over to Walter Meyer, our site designer. Walter? Is Walter Meyer on the meeting?
Sorry, yeah, the microphone was off, my apologies. So Walter Meyer, Principal of Local Office Landscape and Urban Design. Next slide. This resilient buffer zone that you see in yellow is addressing nuisance flooding and storm surge, which is well documented throughout the Rockaway Peninsula. Coastal resiliency is achieved with a multi-layered design focusing on land development, topography, and individual buildings. The plan pulls back from the coast and turns entitled, buildable land into a new resilient recreation buffer that adds to the previous 15-acre preserve from 2003, comprising the area between Beach 44th to the west, Beach 32nd to the east, and the boardwalk to the south. Dense development is concentrated near transit along Edgemere Avenue, aka Shorefront Parkway, and coastal natives in a dune forest will create pollinator habitat and provide flood protection. Next slide. This protective topography and the development portion of the site will be elevated to protect against sea surge, bay surge, groundwater flooding, and increasing rain intensity as a result of climate change. To account for decades of future sea level rise, the development will be elevated from three to eight feet, depending on the location, so that the occupied stories of the buildings would have a minimum group floor elevation that exceeds the code-required design flood elevation by approximately four feet. Groundwater management landscapes in low-line areas will improve drainage for the existing neighborhood, not just the new construction. Approximately 400,000 cubic yards of fill will be required to elevate the resiliency. Next slide please. This diagram reflects all the strategies working together, a sustainable environment that is able to be resilient to future shocks. The site and buildings are coupled to manage all water from cloud to ground with a network of rain gardens, porous paving, blue roofs, and a rainwater reuse for irrigation. These measures are far beyond code and reduce risk for existing surrounding community and keep millions of gallons of surface water out of Jamaica Bay during each rain event. Energy resilience is achieved through New York City's first fossil-fuel-free neighborhood, fighting climate change by using passive house design strategies, PV arrays, efficient geothermal heating and cooling, and hot water. I'll pass it back to Sarah now, thank you.
In conclusion, the actions before the Commission today will enable a community development that provides for high-quality rental and homeownership opportunities for all. Oh, I'm sorry, next slide please. Robust retail and community facility space driven by local needs and supporting local businesses, local job creation, over 45 acres of outdoor recreation space, a community that's resilient and sustainable design features, and a development defined and driven by continued community engagement. Next slide please. Next slide, thank you. Thank you for the time this morning. I'm joined by members of the Development Team, Land Use and Environmental Council, BHP, the environmental consultant and civil engineer on the project, and representatives from New York City Parks and HPD. We are happy to take any questions you have at this time.
It appears that we may have lost the chair. So I'm going to ask, we're okay on quorum, I'm seeing everybody's here. So if I can ask, I don't know if Commissioner or Vice Chair Knuckles, if you want to facilitate Q and A, if you're able to. I can see him here.
Well, we can see his ceiling.
Yeah, we can see, we can see his ceiling. We know that he's listening.
Ryan, I'm going to pick it off with some questions.
Commissioner, if you would facilitate Q and A?
Sure, go ahead. Commissioner Bernie?
Okay, thank you. Could the applicant team explain a little bit more about the site design layout of the buildings? I was a little confused about a couple of things. One was why the commercial was put closer to the beach side rather than to the roadside. And just the sort of general layout of the housing seemed to me to lack any real sort of sense of place. The difference between private roads and public roads and the use or the ownership and the management of everything that was colored green, that was labeled open space, but it wasn't clear to me under whose jurisdiction that open space would be.
Commissioner Bernie, this is Walter Meyer.
Oh, hi, Walter. Good to be here.
Yeah, yeah. And I think the drawings probably don't communicate exactly what the placemaking is doing. And in the future, there'll be three-dimensional development of that. But to be clear, the big idea of placemaking and commercial ground floor activation was to have an arrival transit plaza around the train station with density and ground floor activation of commercial. And keeping in mind, that's where the boulevard and the parkway are, Edgemere Avenue and Shorefront Parkway, connected with a retail corridor that brings you from the train station to the boardwalk and the beach. And in the middle will be a town green surrounded by the hotel and also micro retail. So we have a sequence of compactness, you know, with a promenade between really tight public space, you know, a tight right-of-way, as well as an experience of openness and collective experience in that town green. And it culminates with this kind of dramatic beach plaza, where the retail corridor ends with this kind of terrace hotel and a terrace brewery and restaurant and community space that overlooks the beach plaza, kind of like an amphitheater with a stage and an informal grass lawn, set into the dunes and the beach and the boardwalk beyond. So really, the center of gravity of this place is that beach plaza. And that the town green is this kind of seasonal use, that in the winter, when the beach is kind of a tough place to be, a lot of the cultural events, poetry and live music will happen in the town green in the center, protected from the heavy winds of the winter, invite ice skating and those sorts of things in the small park in the middle. And then with regards to the single, you know, the bungalows and townhouses at the edge of town, the intention the intention there was to clone the Rockaway bungalow courts. There's different typologies there. But the bungalow courts you'll see in the plan and you'll see in the future in more three-dimensional development and future presentations where it's meant to have, you know, pedestrian spaces between buildings, between the bungalow courts, as well as automobile access alternating. And then your question about public and private. The open spaces will be privately owned and maintained by a future HOA. And the roads, there's a kind of a super block of public roads that includes 38th, 35th, and 32th. But everything else in between is private. And this is an exercise fairly, very similar to Auburn by the Sea, where the private roads are where we can really push a lot of the porous paving and placemaking and special materials. And that's where the resiliency really rises is in those private roads. And that's where we can make our compactness and beautiful cross-sections for the streets. And we're able to get those roads up high out of the sea level rise calculations, so that it's decades of safety here. The public roads are, the legal grade of the public roads are lower, about plus eight, NAVD-88, but the private roads are getting up to plus 16 as quick as possible, but using universal slopes, so universal design principles, you know, slopes that are not too steep, so everyone can use them for ADA access, but also senior citizens and toddlers need to get up these slopes. There isn't much of a grade change in perception. It's just 5% slopes. But they do just get it high enough so that we achieve what I call resiliency 2.0. Resiliency 1.0 was to build it back, putting buildings on stilts, ignoring Jane Jacobs. Well, now we're taking Jane Jacobs and climate change and making the street and the sidewalk connected to the ground-floor programs, and so that everything is unified as a New York street in the way we've always known New York City.
Would it be helpful to pull up a site planner or rendering to talk around?
Yeah, it might be. It might be good just to see that while you were talking.
I think Slide 7 is the site plan.
Yeah.
David, you'll see 38th there on the far left, and then you'll see 35th in the middle, running north-south. And then 32nd. Those are the kind of super-block public roads, right? And everything in between is private.
It's private.
Yeah, of course, the legal grade is higher than existing. Existing roads are like plus five. Legal grades are around plus eight, but still not high enough for climate change and sea level rise. So in those spaces between, you know, we're mounting up to plus 16, which is far above the code, but calculates the most aggressive curves for sea level rise and climate change.
Yeah. You know, on that topic, and I know, Walter, you've given a lot of thought to this in the Rockaways, and you're definitely an expert in these questions, but, you know, it's all very well to do this resiliency for storm surge and so on, but when you talk about long-term sea level rise, you can raise your buildings above those FEMA levels, but then you create a community that's completely isolated because all the surrounding roads and transportation are completely inundated. So what, I mean, I know this is a very long-term idea, a long-term discussion, but what do you feel about that in terms of just development in the Rockaways in general, I guess?
Yeah, so I'm being, I have a bungalow, you know, I'm a homeowner here in Edgemere, right behind this property. My bungalow will be improved by this development because of the dune forest along the edge that's coming with this project, as well as the increased head pressure on DEP's stormwater pipes. And none of this water is going into those pipes. It's all being treated on-site, you know, beyond 10-year rain events, which are legally required, we're going 100-year. But you touch on something existential, which is really critical. What we see is, you know, you know, over two mortgage cycles, that this property, you know, will be feasible. And for us, it was an important moral quandary in our firm of, you know, should we be living in this place at all? And in economic terms, the answer is yes. But most importantly, this creates safety in the short term as the city starts to do the things it needs to do for estate planning for families at a longer scale. Of course, after 100 years, this is a retreat conversation that needs to be addressed. But in the next two mortgage cycles, here is a place that creates safety now for residents all around it. It's, the other thing that you touched on is what about the streets around it, the plus-five elevation that I mentioned? What about even the legal grades, right? We anticipated the ground-floor transition blocks, so the buildings that are in the transition blocks that feather down to existing grade, we shift to more architectural strategies there and less site strategies because we have to meet grade. And we anticipate that roads will be elevated over time, as they are being run by DDC incrementally. And so what our architectural ground floors are meant to receive those new floor legal grade elevation changes and existing elevation changes of roads that are already low. So, you know, we're using these double-height ground floors and such, anticipating those changes on the transition blocks.
Okay. Okay, so listen, we'll come back and have this conversation again in 60 years, okay?
It's a date.
Thank you.
Hey, we might be robots, so don't put it past Elon Musk.
Commissioner Ram Prasad.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. This is a massive project, you know, one that's going to have a big impact on the community, and I know it's going to involve major coordination with city agencies. With that said, I know both the community board and the borough president had a number of recommendations and concerns. Can the applicant address some of those or speak specifically, for example, to the deed restriction for the hotels? And if you had any recent conversation or written commitments in DOT or MTA with regards to increasing bus service, train service, and with DOT, sorry, the widening of Edgemere, have you had any recent discussions in regards to that?
HPD, would you like to start with the response?
Sure thing. Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. I'll start off with the first comment that you made, the specific points that you called out in regards to the boutique hotel. You know, as part of this UDEP approval that would be, that's being sorted out, our land disposition documents that will travel with this project and when the project is disposed of to the development team, it will accurately specify what the use is for the properties as part of that disposition, including on the boutique hotel. And if you could just probably reiterate, what was the follow-up after the vote? Was it the?
With the, with the city agencies with regards to DOT and MTA. MTA is specifically about increasing train service to the A train and for the buses, because this will have a big impact on the community. And no, the Rockaway Transit Desert over there without, you know.
Yeah, I totally agree with you on that. MTA is, we have the project. I can't comment on specific plans on the, on MTA's part to increase bus and train access and the ability to increase those features. But I would just mention that, you know, as part of the MTA's capital plan, you know, they are looking to do improvements to the Beach 67th Street Station. So I just, I indicate that as, you know, there is a start as part of that, trying to address the needs that's going to be a part of this community, a part of the MTA.
And with Edgemere, the street widening for it, has DOT been in touch with you in regards to our coordinating?
So, right, that's also parts of the conversation. And as you know, as part of this project, Edgemere Avenue will be widened from Beach 32nd to Beach 38th. I mean, the city is also committing funding to have this development team and our partners design the further widening of Edgemere from 38th to 62nd. And in our conversations with MTA, we understand that this would be a significant first step into having that street widening work actually happen.
I have some more questions. I'll let all the commissioners go first.
Questions from other commissioners. Commissioner Deloos.
Following up on the theme of some of the recommendations that were in the community board decision, you know, they also mentioned information requests around local hiring, increasing parking, and also citing of a school. And I'm just wondering if the development team or HPD can comment on that. And there was also, I think, in the borough president's recommendation, a request for, you know, more details about the 10 acres of open space that have yet to be programmed. And then my final question really has to do with affordability levels, unit breakdown, and phasing. If they can comment on those things. Thanks.
So I'll have been on the schools and affordability, and I think you can address the other items. So although this project does not have a school development as part of the plans, just on the city's, on the city's front, you know, we are looking to include a new school and other initiatives that we have happening in the area. There's a planned site for Reserve School on the southern portion of the block along Rockaway Beach Boulevard between Beach 39th and Beach 40th Street. And that's been transferred over to the DOE should the needs in the area, based off of their analytics, indicate that a new school is needed. So that's my initial response to the schools aspect. And it is, it is an aspect of this project and the overall projects and and just everything happening out in the Rockaways. It is an active conversation with SCA and DOE relating to.
And sorry, can I just interrupt on that if I may? An anticipated timing of that relative to this project, do you have any information you can share?
The anticipated timing for a new school coming online? So it's my understanding that DOE does, they assess the needs. I actually can't comment on how often they do the, they assess the needs. But, you know, once their, once their analytics trigger to them that there is that need, then they start the process for satisfying that need. So I don't have to, specific to your question. I don't have a timeline as it relates to this project. I do understand that it is an aspect that is closely monitored by DOE.
Yeah, I mean, this is Paris Strader. I don't know if folks can hear me. Generally, SCA and DOE, you know, monitor, you know, population levels within a particular sub-district. And as needs arise, you know, they'll, you know, they'll update the capital plan accordingly. And, yeah, I don't know the specific timeframe either. But, you know, here, this has been specifically flagged for them because there's, within this sub-district, there's two sites that have been allocated. One is within city ownership already. The other one is being negotiated currently, a second site. So, you know, everyone's aware that once these units come online, that there will be need generated and we're monitoring it accordingly.
I'll note that the Department of City Planning plays a role in working with the SCA in projecting school seat needs, and so we can come back with more information on the Rockaways in particular, when this comes for post-hearing follow-up.
Great. I think you were also going to provide information about affordability levels and unit breakdown?
Correct. It may have been mentioned, it may not have been mentioned, so just want to set the stage here for folks. And this is a massive project. I know that's been mentioned. And the initial first phase of this project is the completion of the nature preserve. I say all that to mean that any affordable housing development will come, you know, and towards the ending of the creation of the nature preserve. We're still in early negotiations with the development team on what that affordable housing product would look like. All of the 13, 20 affordable units are not going to come online at the same time, so we're looking at a phasing of those units coming online. And where we are in the conversations with the team now is, you know, looking at a potential for a space that would have upwards of maybe 500 units across a couple of buildings. And what, where those conversations are also currently is looking at it with our mix-and-match term sheet as a starting point for the conversation of what that product would look like in that phase. But again, I just want to caution that we're still very early on in those conversations. We have a ton of things to do before we actually get to some finalized version of what the affordability will look like in that first phase.
I think from the development team perspective, we really are working with the city to create a balanced, mixed-income community here that not only caters to low-income but moderate and middle-income households as well. And, you know, the homeownership, you know, component is really to be an attainable and attainable product. There are going to be some smaller starter units to ensure access into the homeownership portion of the project as well.
I can just follow up. During, during the community conversations on the homeownership, I understand the desire for the homeownership, but especially given, I forget the gentleman's name who was presenting more about the overall plan, and I think he used the term two mortgage cycles, until, you know, until climate change takes over. I'm just wondering if the city is, you know, that raises concerns for me, I guess. It's like, you know, why create homeownership opportunities in a place that we know that within two mortgage cycles may not be able to provide for local families?
This is Walter speaking. Walter Rodriguez Meyer. So the two mortgage cycles referring to the increasing of safety for the neighborhood around it, and that after two mortgage cycles of 60 years, there would be an alignment with, you know, state, city, and federal governments to talk about retreat of Zone 1 of New York, not just Rockaways. Keep in mind, this ground that we're discussing is higher than parts of Wall Street, so it's a larger existential conversation for the city. And that's what I refer to. Not that this community was unsafe after two mortgage cycles. In fact, it will create safety for everyone around it during that period as the entire Zone 1 of New York is being discussed.
The other thing I'll note is referencing. Also, I'll reference back to the discussion, the presentation that we really recently had about the department's approach to resiliency, and in particular with respect to the Rockaway Peninsula, looking to encourage housing along the major arterial or along the major roads, which will remain open, which is where the city will continue to maintain them because of the existing housing that is there. And then disincentivizing moving away from constructing housing further from the subway stations, further from the main roads in areas that are in more flood-prone areas. If the commission would like, we could do a quick recap as part of post-hearing follow-up.
And I think that was one of the goals of the site design of this project, as well as if you look at the site plan, you'll see the bulk of the housing, the multifamily portion, is really directly tied into Edgemere Avenue between 32nd and 38th Street and pulling that density north. There are some, you know, the density does step down as you get closer to the water. But one of the slides that I think Walter had gone through is really the enhanced buffer that we're creating between the boardwalk and the built environment to be consistent with that goal.
Before I return to Commissioner Ram Prasad, would other commissioners like to ask questions? Commissioner Levin?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I have a question that Commissioner Deloos asked at the review session was on my mind as well. And that is about how the nature preserve gets built, what the coordinate, what the respective roles of the developer and Parks Department are in getting it built in the first place. And then once it's there, how will it be maintained?
So I can start the question from the development team, and then I can hand it over to the Parks Department for the MNO side of things. The development team has been working very closely with many groups within the Parks Department with regards to the design and restoration of this project. We will be constructing, or the development team will be constructing and restoring the preserve on behalf of the city. It was currently mapped as parkland in 2003, but currently resides in HPD jurisdiction. It is our understanding, once the preserve is substantially complete, it will be turned over to Parks Department jurisdiction for ongoing maintenance and operations. Eric or Mitchell from Parks, would you like to talk through the staffing and MNO side of things?
Well, he comes online. Just to reiterate, then, the development team would be managing the construction in coordination with Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Who was the, who's the individual that you'd like to have speak to this?
Either Eric Peterson or Mitchell Loring or Nick Molinari.
I see Nick. I don't see the others.
Mitchell, I think, needs to be unmuted.
He may not have been signed up as part of the team. Let's, oh, here we go.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. My name is Mitchell Loring. I'm a senior project planner at New York City Parks. I think the remaining part of this question was just covering how the park will be maintained going forward, the nature preserve.
Yes.
And we are working on a development agreement with the applicant. There will be providing funding that will help fund two, excuse me, two full time and two part time staff that will be posted at the multipurpose building that is adjacent to the park site. So we'll have a base right there and operations out of that site. Then the nature preserve will be maintained like all of our other park sites, but with the advantage of having that base immediately adjacent to the park.
Thank you.
Back to you, Commissioner Ron Prashad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two more quick points. I see that the BP had mentioned. One was with regards to community centers and trying to dedicate about 50,000 square feet, if you can speak to that. And the last item I bring up is just about whether or not you guys are going to start up the Community Advisory Board, which is one of his other recommendations. If so, when and how would that be created?
Sure. Can we bring up site plan on slide number seven? And while that's done, I can talk to the cab. So this team is committed to continued community engagement. We have established a quarterly cab that will be held starting in February. Our meeting, I think the first meeting is scheduled for May 4th. So we will keep with the community organizations that we're working with, the local community board, elected officials to get the word out and to start those meetings. With regards to the community center, we do have a space held for one. It's Site F on the site plan. So it's on the corner of Shorefront or Edgemere between 34th and 35th Street. The, we are committed to creating this community center. With regards to square footage, we believe that programming and design should really just drive how much space is needed. And so we are, as we had mentioned in our letter to the VP and earlier today, we are committed to meeting with the community to better understand the desired programming for a site like this. And that will ultimately inform design and square footage.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, I will then thank the applicant team. And I will also note that I neglected to give a sense of just how extensive an applicant team there is. In addition to the names that I read out, the applicant team included Veranda Simmons, Eric Bluestone, Kevin Paris, Jerome Dunbar, Matthew Giuliana, Albin Schlein, Jason Diaz, Bhaskar Srivastava, Mitchell Loring, Nicholas Molinari, Eric Peterson, and Jay Proudie from an alphabet soup of city agencies. And so thank you to the entire applicant team for your presentation and answering the questions. We will now turn and follow our standard procedure of five speakers in opposition, five speakers in support until we've made our way through the, at this point, remaining 32 speakers. We'll begin with Paula Segal.
Don't see Ms. Segal in the room anymore.
Okay. I will then move to Jenna Tapaldo.
Hello, my name is Jenna Tapaldo and I'm a lifelong resident of Rockaway. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. There's a lot of awesome things in this plan, the nature preserve, water management, renewables on site, local businesses and pedestrian and performance spaces. My firsthand experiences with Hurricane Sandy as a teenager drove me to dive into how planning and development based on outdated assessments negatively impacted my friends, family and neighbors in South Queens. Currently, I'm a researcher studying the human impacts of climate change. Old FEMA flood maps drawn in the eighties were inaccurate prior to Hurricane Sandy, and they were updated only after Hurricane Sandy by FEMA around 2015. The currently, the current environmental impact assessment for this project, Arvern East, is from 2003, when I was personally six years old. We've learned a lot more about the risks and potential impacts associated with climate change since then. The city has put forth climate and resiliency plans, and our community has changed in many ways. For example, since then, Peninsula Hospital has closed, leaving one hospital to serve the entire peninsula. Bar Rockaway has had one of the highest COVID case and death rates in the city. A lack of healthcare access has long been an issue in the Rockaways with disparities across racial and income groups. With proposals to develop and increase our peninsula's population, the city must take infrastructure like healthcare, sewage and transportation into account, demanding investments from developers or the city itself. What is the plan for education? Schools are overcrowded and underfunded. What is the plan for transit? The Rockaways struggle with equitable and accessible transportation as previously mentioned by, I think, Commissioner Ram Prashad. Its development, sorry. Arvern East is currently public land. Its development would be a great opportunity to address the housing crisis by including even more truly affordable housing and community land trusts. As our city recovers from COVID and faces a climate crisis, there is much to consider. At the very least, this project needs a new environmental impact statement. Thank you for your time and consideration regarding this matter. I yield to the rest of my time.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Tapaldo. Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be Alexis Foot.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commission. My name is Alexis Foot. I'm a wife and a mother of three. I believe that there needs to be a new environmental impact statement. Not only that, we need a critical access care hospital. Entrepreneurship opportunities where entrepreneurs receive $200,000 in equity grants. The brewery and other amenities need to be built before the natural preserve because we're already a natural preserve. This, I mean, people drive in there and go and relax. And I feel like there's a lot of colonizer language being used in this proposal. And I say this because I was born and raised in Holland. I also too was a teen who was homeless and coming out of foster care. And no one prepared me about housing and nature programs. And so I say this to say is that the project needs to kind of be like scrapped and going back to the drawing board. I think all the housing that is on this plan needs to either be put into condominiums or home ownership opportunities which are affordable and have solar panels, green rules, and there needs to be more space dedicated to farming. I think the farming space would help us bring economic development. Now that there's going to be a lot of policies that are going to be introduced for hemp and marijuana production. And this project needs to be a reparations project. This needs to be the Freedom Georgia Project Part Two. This land, this land should not go to LNM. I live in a property with LNM. I live in Auburn View. And they do not hold their promises. They give their space to nonprofit organizations that don't show up for the residents. Sharm is downstairs. The kids have nowhere to go and you have all these people that come in here and do art where kids here can't do art in a Shasma space. Canba hasn't been here in forever. So no, LNM is not, I don't approve them having this project. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Foot. Questions from the commission? Again, thank you for testifying.
Thank you so much. One more thing. Wait, wait, we do need schools. We definitely need schools. Thank you. I yield my time. Sorry.
Thank you. Heard and registered. Our next speaker is Patrick Tuberty.
Patrick doesn't appear to be in the room.
Okay, we will move on to Rochelle Stanley.
Hello, I just want to tell everyone Happy New Year and thank you so much for this opportunity. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
I'm great. Wonderful. Resident of Rockaway for a very long time, 40 years of a wonderful relationship and experience in the lower Rockaways. And the reason I say lower Rockaway is for anyone that's not familiar, there is, there's a bit of an unspoken divide on the peninsula where we do have to understand that there are a lot of things that may take place on one end of the peninsula that the other members of the other end of the peninsula may not benefit from. So that is something to definitely keep in mind as the development continues. I'm so excited about the, the green space that has been spoken about. But there are some very real concerns that I wanted to mention, and I appreciate this opportunity. There's, the first one is a very large population on the peninsula at this time. That large population does impact every single aspect of everything that we want to see happen for what currently exists and any development to come. That impacts our schools, as mentioned before, we are presently overcrowded in pretty much most of our schools. There are multiple schools on the peninsula at this time that have housed, that are currently housing five schools in one building. Trailers are now, are currently in use in surrounding elementary schools. And that is a, just a standard practice. So we definitely have a serious problem when it comes to the educational resources. And that just is an infrastructure thing. We're not even discussing the actual, what's taking place inside the buildings and the needs for support there. We also have the community center I heard is proposed. I'm glad to see that there is thought given to that. However, the community center is a far cry from the needs that we have in this zone for the community. One major need is the kids currently on the peninsula have no resources for activities, athletics, and the various things that are needed. If you wanted to start a soccer club, I know there was mention of a soccer club attempt on the peninsula quite a few times, quite a few years. And there was no opportunity to access field space adequately to have a league. All resources were present except land. And so these are things that have been a major issue for the peninsula. Many thousands of residents and homeowners on the peninsula throughout the 40 years I have experienced that have been very adamant in saying they see many things happening and they don't know what's going on. They're not aware. So community involvement, community engagement has been grossly lacking throughout this process. That includes religious organizations, homeowners, residents at large and business owners all have expressed a degree, a consistent degree of cluelessness when it comes to the awareness of what will be taking place as well as, so there's an issue with transparency and just familiarity with the, with the goals and the whys behind the decisions that I made.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Ms. Stanley.
Thank you so much for your time.
It's our pleasure. Please, a question from, any questions from the commission? If the clock could be taken down so that I could see the commissioners? Okay, not seeing any raised hands, we will then turn to Molly Adams.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair and Commission. My name is Molly Adams and I'm speaking on behalf of New York City Audubon in favor of supporting this calendar item in order to secure funding for the proposed nature preserve as a forever wild sanctuary. Preserving green space in the Rockaways will benefit people and wildlife by providing opportunity for the community to connect to nature as well as a safe habitat for migratory birds and a natural barrier against storm damage. New York City Audubon has been working with partners to protect birds in the Rockaways for over a decade and are committed to the conservation of beach nesting birds in front of the Arvern East Project and the Nature Preserve. Areas like the Rockaways that are important for wildlife are even more important for us. When you protect birds and habitat, you protect people. During the COVID crisis, residents have relied on city parks to maintain their mental and physical health. This nature preserve will build community by offering new jobs, a place for students to learn about science and conservation, and somewhere that families can spend time together outside. Footpaths that exclude persistent nocturnal lighting, vehicles and dogs will safeguard the habitat and secure its benefits, including protection against flooding. A proper preserve will act as a home to wildlife, a sanctuary for people and serve as a necessary natural barrier to protect against future hurricane damage. Thank you. I can pass on the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Questions from the commission? Our next speaker will be Ethan Long.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please begin.
Hello, my name is Ethan Long. I'm speaking in support of the Arvern East Project. I am one of the owners and founders of Rockaway Brewing Company. Rockaway Brewing is a small independent craft microbrewery that was started 10 years ago as a dream behind our bungalows on Beach 25th. We've evolved into a small independent microbrewery that now is part of the New York State Brewers Association and founding members of the New York City Brewers Guild. Currently, we have a tasting room on Beach 72nd and a small manufacturing location in Long Island City. Our Rockaway location has served as a community space over the years with such programs as the Rockaway Buyers Club, the Makers Market, Rockaway Food Initiative, Incubator Kitchen for local chefs and countless other small events, music shows, beach cleanups and celebrations and local business meetings. It is our goal to be part of the Arvern East location to merge our two two parts from our small manufacturing and brewery top room and take the spirit of both into the new location in Rockaway. We've continued to seek sustainable and efficient practices with an environmental and social consciousness. We look with this new location to build from the ground up and install state of the art equipment and formalized sustainability programs and initiatives with green energy solutions. Some of these goals would be composting of our spent grains, solar energy, the capability of CO2 recapture using bike delivery to lower our carbon footprint. Some of these things I think would lead to being an economic driver as small manufacturing jobs. I'll leave some of this for my partner Marcus to speak of. But you know, within our facility, we have brewers, seller apprenticeship programs and delivery persons, including tasting room jobs and a food hall. And the food hall, we hope, will encourage local chefs and kitchen staff to create their own business as we've done over the years with our incubator kitchen at the current location on Beach 72nd. You know, we look to support our neighbors and small businesses and hope to be a community hub. And I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. If I could ask production to please not put up the time clock as we're losing a lot of time toggling back and forth. Any questions? Commissioner Deloos?
I'm just wondering if Mr. Long could talk about how many total jobs they think that the merging and expansion would result in and how many local potential jobs?
Yeah, currently, we employ 20 to 23 people. Kind of that was pre-COVID. Our goal is to, with the combined location, have 40 to 50 jobs available.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Long. Our next speaker is Eric Peterson. Ryan, is Mr. Peterson still in the room?
Mr. Peterson is in the room and we have given him the ability to unmute. So he should be able to unmute. Can hear us. Press the unmute button.
Hello, this is Patrick Tuberty. You guys called me before, but there were technical difficulties.
Sure.
We would be pleased to hear your testimony now.
Okay.
Thank you so much. After two and a half hours, I definitely wanted to speak. Good morning and happy, safe and healthy new year to all listening and to our city commissioners. I don't know how you do this job. My name is Patrick Tuberty. I'm a lifelong resident of the Rockaways, born in the now. I'm a lifelong resident of the Rockways, born in the now F-rated St. John's Hospital of Far Rockaway. I have some, a few reservations regarding the Auburn East Project. I pose a question to the commissioners. Please ask yourselves, how can our city accept an environmental impact study statement from 2003 to approve this development? Let me remind all listening of the devastation of Superstorm Sandy in 2012. With eight to 10 feet of water in our streets, nearly every home had destruction, including most of Rockaway's housing projects. Six neighbors of ours lost their lives. And with stress and depression from the failed Build It Back programs, many of our elderly and most vulnerable died in 2013. That's another study that should take place, including both of my grandparents. An updated environmental impact study needs to happen, one that is post Hurricane Sandy, which was eight years ago. Here is why. Our schools are underserved and overcrowded. And because of toll bridges, we can hardly get substitute teachers or teachers. There are thousands of new residents on our beautiful sandbar. And with 17 new high-density structures that will also add another 12,000 residents, this sandbar has very little economically mobile jobs, forcing most of us to leave the area for work. Transportation is underfunded and limited. Our two roads in and out are horrific. And now, the place of my birth is yet in the one opened F-rated hospital is the only one for hundreds of thousands of residents on the sandbar. To approve this project without an updated environmental impact study is irresponsible and callous. Please require this of the developers. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, and thank you for being persistent in getting back, getting back into the meeting. Questions for Mr. Tuberty? Again, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we will turn to Matthew Juliana.
Hi, this is Matthew Juliana. I accidentally registered as a speaker. I'm a member of the applicant team.
Great. And then our next speaker will be Justice Faber.
Hello.
Hello.
How you doing?
Great, please begin.
Ryan Hunter.
Yes, my name is Justice, my name is, my name is Justice Faber. How you doing? I'm a lifelong Rockaway in 40 years. Born and raised in Rockaway. Born in the St. John's Hospital. Grew up in nature, him whose houses though, when it wasn't popular for folks to live in Rockaway or to be in Rockaway. When it was distressing, it's kind of seeing that a lot of folks have left for greener pastures. My family have stayed, we stayed. My wife currently works at the same hospital. I stand here and supported this project. When I look at Rockaway, it's the biggest construction boom ever to take place out there. Yet, there aren't any jobs that are provided for union workers that live there. I'm a Local 79 member. It would be nice to be able to work in my community. LNM has committed to hire local residents and paying them a livable wage. And it means a lot. It means a lot. We know that transportation is difficult. We know that getting to the city, to other places around New York City to for work, when we seeing construction taking place in our community, yet, you know, we are unable to work on these jobs. I don't stand alone. There are about 400 members that live out there, and it would be nice to be able to work out there. I came up in a time, I grew up in this era when it was extremely hard and crime-ridden areas to see that it's actually taking place, quote-unquote, being gentrified in some aspects for the better. But the folks that have been there that stood the test of time through the ups and downs, it would be, it would be good to have our just do. I believe that this project will help us in many ways. You know, the nature preserve is great. You know, nothing is perfect. But what's, what's perfect about this is the fact that we can real have some real economic development and it's a commitment to give folks a career that they can actually rise above some hard-stricken areas, some poverty-stricken areas, and have a true economic platform. I would really like for you guys to consider, you know, passing this project through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faber. Questions from the commission? Okay, we will move on to Vito Spiziali.
Hello. Hello, hello.
We hear you, but very faintly.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Hi, yes. So I'm a Local 79 member and I'm in favor of this project because it will bring good-paying, middle-class jobs. Thank you.
Thank you for the, thank you for the efficiency of your testimony. Questions from the commission? Then we will move on to Tafadar Sora.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, thank you. Thank you to the planning commission for hearing me out. I would just like to speak in favor of this project. I think that it will lead to a lot of community revitalization, the creation of very good career track, career opportunities and jobs, as well as affordable housing, which, you know, Far Rockaway and our city is direly in need of. As a community man who organizes all over the city and works with youth and workers and vulnerable populations, especially since the pandemic hit, the needs of our city have become clearer and clearer to me. And in my eyes, this is the sort of project and the sort of development that meets the needs of the working class of this city. I think it will create the sort of jobs that will create, that will lead to, you know, a greater revenue for the city via income taxes. And, you know, every city does better when the quality of life of its residents goes up. So I would like to thank the planning commission for hearing out this project, and I strongly support it, and I hope that the city goes forward with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Knight.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with my video that was inadvertent. Raise hand.
Okay, thank you. It's good to know that some raise hands functions work even when they're not intended to. We will then move on to Marcus Burnett.
Hi, I'm Marcus Burnett. I'm one of the other co-founder of the Rockway Brewing Company. I'd like to thank the commission for hearing this testimony. I, my partner spoke to most of the points which pertain to the technical part of us moving our two operations to this location. So I thought I'd just give you a bit of a background, my experience of operating the taproom on 72nd Street here in Rockaway. We opened that about five years ago. As a microbrewery, we're allowed to have a tasting room. We also had a large space, and we decided to share that space with the community. One of the major things that we have really been able to do is bring together community around that space. What I really realized is in Rockaway, that's really lacking, especially in the wintertime. People have nothing to do here in Rockaway. I'm a resident. And I can tell you that in the middle of the winter, it's, it's pretty hard to find something to do in the afternoon and evening when you get off work. So I've really seen this space grow and really hold the part of the community that's around that area and 72nd Street and Auburn. And I've had local residents come up to me and thank, thank us for starting that, that project there. So I'm hoping that in this new project, we'll bring the same sort of energy to it, create a community space, also an incubator kitchen where people who are trying to, you know, bring their culinary dreams to fruition. We've, at our current location on 72nd Street, we've been able to do that by rotating through a number of different food practitioners who some have gone on to successfully start their own businesses. So I think that's another thing that's really lacking in Rockaway Peninsula is the opportunity for people who have a dream to start business, to get something started. So that's been a really successful program for us. The other thing that I think is really interesting about brewing in general and jobs, which we're really excited to create some, some more in Peninsula, is that the actual brewing process, you don't have to go to college to get a job to be a brewer. It's an apprenticeship program. It's the kind of thing that someone, you know, with generally good mechanical skills and a bit of know-how can pick up, you know, starting at the bottom, work their way up from cleaning, cleaning the tanks to transferring liquids to eventually hopefully brewing beer. And a good thing about that is that in the five boroughs, I think there's more than 30 microbreweries now. And once you get trained up in one brewery, you have the skills to work on another. So in a way, you know, we're also be offering a job training program for people from Rockaway without educations. I really wish for my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Again, thank you for your testimony, and we will move on to Tony Pires.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tony Pires. I'm a Rockway resident for over 27 years. I mean, when I first moved out to Rockways, it wasn't much here. It wasn't a place, I mean, I couldn't find places for the family to sit down and have a good meal or, you know, sit back and have a cold beverage with a friend. The Rockway Brewing Company opened up literally a block from me, and I've never really left. I went with a friend of mine the second day they opened, and we walked in as strangers and we walked out as family. And as Marcus mentioned, you know, the brewery is not just a taproom. It's a community space and a space where all is welcome. And I emphasize, all is welcome, all. And prior to COVID, I was working for a prestigious space event in Chelsea. I've been furloughed since March. The brewery gave me an opportunity to earn over the summer in assisting any projects where, you know, resources required. Then in mid-October, they gave me an opportunity, an opportunity to showcase my culinary skills. With their support, I managed a two-week food pop-up. It was quite successful and grateful for the opportunity. I'm here speaking for myself, but they have given many Rockway residents opportunities as well. I'm honored also to have been a part of many charitable events hosted over the past four-plus years at the brewery. I'm proud to be a part of this community and proud to have Rockway Brewery be a part of it. The brewery, you know, we all lost some friends, you know, over the past three, four years. And the brewery has strong support for their friends and family and always honor the memorial services. I wish they are, you know, they're granted the permission to expand and expand the love. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you for your testimony. I think many of us probably have the theme song from Friends cycling, from tears cycling through.
Everybody knows your name.
And also are thinking fondly of when we can next go to a community space and maybe experience your culinary skills. Any questions? Well, thank you for your testimony. And we will move on to Mike Vatter.
Mike Vatter does not appear to be in the room. I will note that it appears that Paula Segal has returned to the room, and she had...
Then Ms. Segal, we would welcome your testimony.
Sorry. Oh, my goodness. Can you all hear me?
Yes, please go ahead, Ms. Segal.
Perfect. Hello, commissioners. It's really nice to, to hear you all today. And thank you so much for the opportunity to share some of my thoughts. I am here today in my personal capacity. I know I appear before you with some regularity in a professional capacity. But I'm here because of the depth of my personal engagement with the community in Rockaway after Superstorm Sandy. And when the interest in redeveloping the peninsula after Superstorm Sandy in 2013 and 2014 focused on the Auburn East site, you'll hear from other members of community organizations that were active in responding to and working with the design competition that HPD and the development team did in 2013. And some of the ideas that came out of that design competition that are, that we're glad to see have influenced the physical design that you heard about today. But also want to highlight some of the more structural issues with both the before you and some of the structural ideas for how to address a shared, the shared existential vulnerabilities of adding an entire community on the peninsula that seems to have not been carried forward into the application. So as a preliminary matter, I just want to point out that the application before you does not include a request for approval of, for disposition of the dozens of acres of city-owned property that must be disposed in order for this project to move forward. The explanation that we received in, back in 2013 and that we continue to receive today is that the disposition approval was granted by this commission in 2006. And that is the approval upon which the applicants now rely. 2006, there were, I'm not sure if any of the commissioners who are on the commission today were, were there then, and certainly conditions were entirely different. But it is that disposition approval on which this whole application is built on. And that greatly disturbs me. Further, among the ideas that we had for how to really preserve equity and preserve community control and have a way to respond to what's happening on the peninsula if development is going to move forward, is actually to have a disposition to a community land trust or another shared stewardship entity that would then be able to respond as a collective and as an upper-profit collective with the community's interests in mind instead of to a private development company only that, that would be steering the property.
Thank you, Ms. Segal. And questions from the commission? Commissioner Delauz?
I, I think Paula was starting to lay out some of the recommendations to address some of the concerns, and I'm wondering if she could highlight, you know, one or two more. And what response has been also from the HPD or the developer?
So unfortunately, conversations with the, the community and the developer were cut short when this project was put aside for lack of funding a couple of years ago. And then only revived now during COVID. There has not been an opportunity for the kind of community organizing and public meetings that we did have in 2013 and 2014 that HPD and the applicant team facilitated then. Everything's happened virtually. It happened in the moment of crisis. And I'm really sad about that. It feels like we have, there's a foundation that we really worked on together in 2013 and 14 that's just been abandoned for its decency. So that's one thing, just to directly say, you know, there's, there's a reason where, why this feels like it's been quite cut off. And I hope that the conversations will move forward. And I hope that this hearing isn't the end of a public discussion. The big innovation that we discussed with the applicant, with the development team, excuse me, back in 2014 was to have a shared ownership structure for some of the infrastructure that I think you heard, you heard Mr. Myers describe, and a shared ownership structure for the land that is a fluid situation on the peninsula. But if it was owned in a shared way, then there would be a community. There could be a shared response to the need for a managed retreat, the need to upgrade systems, the need to elevate. the need to upgrade systems, the need to elevate particular properties. So we were hoping for a disposition to a community land trust that then would lease land to homeowners and mutual housing associations and rental companies. And that seems like it aligns very well with the kind of infrastructure needs that this project has. We also talked about opportunities for furthering local black-owned business and space for, for local black-owned businesses at this site for creating opportunities for jobs, for school, for schools, for making sure that there really was the shared infrastructure. And our understanding really was that the, the key to that was just making sure that control of this project was by the community and not through a disposition to a for-profit enterprise.
Can I just ask a follow-up question there?
Of course.
Given where the conversation. I'm sorry, I'm hearing feedback. I don't know if others hear that. If, if you're not able to achieve the gold standard that you're hoping for related to the disposition to the land trust, are, are, you know, is there a possibility of a, a community benefits agreement or a community, you know, agreement with the developer that, that you, that you think could help achieve some of these same goals?
That all of that will just take time and organizing opportunity. And since this project has been restarted in the middle of a pandemic, it's quite tricky, but I think that that is something that folks could work on. I think there's other, other members of the Rockaway community who are ready to testify today who can address that a little bit more directly.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your persistence in getting back into the meeting, Ms. Segal. Appreciate it. Ryan, if you could check if Mike Vatter has returned to the meeting?
No, he has not.
Okay, the next speaker is Kevin Paris, but he was part of the applicant team, so.
Yes, we have that because. Yeah.
Okay, then our next speaker will be Anthony Williamson.
Hello?
Hello, welcome.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Anthony Williamson and I'm a union organizer, community activist, and a proud immigrant and New Yorker. And today, I'm proud to know that the City Planning Commission is looking into developing New York the right way. This is the first time, as an organizer in the streets of New York, that a major development like this have had the pieces that is going to make our community better. As we grapple in this pandemic, where we have many people with disparities in terms of jobs and healthcare, this project is not the final answer, but it can help to alleviate the problems that we face. So first of all, I must thank the City Planning Commission and as a labor leader and a union activist and a New Yorker, I proudly support this project. It's not perfect, but we're talking about responsible development with labor standard language, which is very important, that will help to change the lives of the young people in our community that really deserve good jobs, so they can have a better way of life. Thank you very much and I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Questions? Then we'll turn to our next speaker, Kevin Alexander.
Okay, this is Kevin Alexander. Can you hear me okay, Madam Chair?
Yes, welcome.
All right. My name again is Kevin Alexander and I am the president and CEO of Rockaway Development and Revitalization Corporation. AudiRC is in favor of the proposed Auburn East Development Amendments being presented today. From a perspective standpoint, AudiRC has played an integral role in the overall Auburn East, Auburn Urban Renewal Project, where provided advocacy, assisted local residents in becoming tenants and homeowners, assisted local businesses, establish, relocate and expand into commercial spaces along the Auburn-by-the-Sea Commercial Corridor, work with city and state agencies and elected officials in our role as the Far Rockaway Empire Zone Administrator to successfully expand our zone to include the Auburn-by-the-Sea project phase. This resulted in more economic leverage for the Auburn-by-the-Sea development team and community economic development opportunities that collectively resulted in the successful recruitment of Stop &amp; Shop as an anchor tenant and thereby creating hundreds of jobs for local community residents and a strong support of the Rockaway community in general. With that being stated, we've also been very outspoken with all developers, including the AED team, about our expectations as some of the gatekeeper of the Rockaways. That includes not only workforce, but creating opportunities that lead to career pathways and construction, supporting local businesses, the local procurement in goods and services, engaging our youth and creating opportunities for local businesses and MWB businesses post-construction to thrive and grow. AudiRC is encouraged by the Auburn East Development Team's community engagement efforts and willingness to consider adjustments to the plan wherever possible and as you've heard today. Most importantly, the development team has a proven track record in the Rockways that leads AudiRC to believe that they will remain committed to developing a project that strikes a balance between the needs of the developers and the needs of the community that will be impacted by this project for future generations. Thank you and I yield the balance of my time.
Thank you. Questions for Kaylin Callahan? Again, thank you for your testimony and we'll move on to Billy Strong.
Mr. Strong is not in the room.
Okay, then we will move on to Mark Albritton Senior.
Also not in the room.
Okay, I note that Kaylin Callahan is signed up again, unless it is a different person of the same name. I would.
No, I don't think so.
Do that as a glitch. Then we'll move on to Raymond Nonus.
Can you notice, if you can hear me, you can press the unmute button on your computer.
That's it.
There we go.
My name is Ray King Yonas. I'm a New York City retiree, born and raised. I support this project for affordable housing in which in turn will keep retirees as myself in New York City. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. King Yonas.
Thank you.
Questions?
You threw me off.
Thank you. We will move on to Nick Malinari.
Nick was part of the applicant team. There was.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Then Jean Belford.
Jean is no longer in the room.
Okay, then Glenn Dreschko.
Okay, I think, I think I did it. You guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, commissioners. First, I want to thank you guys for recognizing Bruce Jacobs at the beginning of this. I had been working with Bruce for quite a while, especially when it came to the Edgemere Commons Development. The Auburn East is an exciting part of the future of Rockaway. Although as exciting as it is, there are some concerns that I have as many members of the community. If this development were to stand alone, it would be pretty good. But the, a lot of the things that city planning is not taking into account is that Edgemere Commons is adjacent to and was part of this study area. Downtown Far Rockaway is in very close proximity. Edgemere Urban Renewal Area is also in very close proximity. So when you take an accumulation of all these different developments, I think there is a lot of things that city planning really needs to consider because that, all those developments are going to bring in over 6,000 units of affordable housing to an area that needs affordable housing like the city does. But most of it is concentrated with limited amount of units available for moderate and middle-income families. So there's going to be 6,000 units of affordable housing. The Auburn East Development is going to be 1,650 units. If you look at the environmental impact statement, I've read the entire Auburn Urban Renewal Environmental Impact Statement. And we all know that prices of construction are high and all these different reasons of why housing is so expensive in New York and there is a desperate need for affordable housing. But we seem to forget about the moderate and middle-income households as well. So as part of this development, if you read the EIS, it clearly states, "The proposed action is intended to promote economic integration by encouraging middle-income households to reside in a community that contains high concentrations of poverty." It also states, "By greatly increasing the number of new middle-income households, the proposed project would promote greater income diversity and introduce more local spending power without displacing any of the lower-income households." So what I'm asking for the commission to do is this area has a very low housing stock and a very low housing supply of affordable homeownership. And that affordable homeownership does not just need to be a part of this. Affordable homeownership really needs to be a significant part of this plan because we're talking about an area where people have lived impoverished for years. They've lived in affordable housing. They've moved, they've moved up the economic ladder and it will be wonderful.
We appreciate your testimony and I'll now turn it over to see if there are questions from the commissioners. Again, thank you for your testimony. I'll note that our next speaker, Ryan, appears to be a repeat of Tony Pires. Just confirming that.
Yes, that is. I, I also, I was going to note, I, our records show that Kaylin Callahan, we, we were unable to get him to in the room. Is that correct? We may have.
No.
Okay, we already had a speaker from, okay.
Yes, so we'll move on to Danine Ferguson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Danine Ferguson, co-chair of the Queens Recovery and Resiliency Committee under the Far Rockaway Auburn Nonprofit Coalition. We are in favor of the Auburn East project. We just want to state that we've been engaged. I represent Auburn Church of God, so Auburn Church of God is the co, is the co-chair. I am the person representing Auburn Church of God as the co-chair for the Queens Recovery and Resiliency. I just want to make that clear. The L and M part, part, party of the development team has engaged us early on the coalition, the Frank Far Rockaway Auburn Nonprofit Coalition and the, and the, and our committee around discussing what opportunities are available for the community. So our, our concerns are around not just jobs, but very livable wages. Also concern for homeownership for, for a variety of income levels and, and opportunities, entrepreneurship opportunities for the local businesses in the community. We would like to also state that the L and M development team has been responsive or the Auburn East Development Team has been responsive to some of the suggestions and recommendations that we've made, including those surrounding the website and marketing and ideas around training for careers and not just jobs and apprenticeship, apprenticeship opportunities. We also want to state that we appreciate the addressing of the resilient strategies that address the flooding, the major flooding that's happening on this peninsula. We also want to engage, we have not gotten there yet, but we're set up for early this year to engage a hiring or working group committee around involving the local residents that are qualified for job and career and training opportunities. I think that should cover it. Thank you for the time and I yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you. Questions for Danine Ferguson? Thanks again. I'll note now that we are getting close to the end of the public hearing. And if you haven't registered to speak, but during the course of the hearing decided that you would like to, please register at this time. You can find instructions on how to register, either by phone or online Our next speaker will be Tiffany Long.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Thank you so much for having me here. So good afternoon, I'm Tiffany Long. I'm the volunteer coordinator for the Far Rockaway Auburn Nonprofit Coalition, also known as Frank. This statement is in behalf of the membership. Frank is in support of the Auburn East project. As long as the L and M developers, their development team and NYC agencies have plans to address the needs for infrastructure improvement and opportunities for our existing businesses and livable wages, employment and homeownership for qualified residents. Thank you so much for your time and I yield my time. The remaining my time.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Long? Thank you. Our next speaker is Ebony Beatty.
Ebony does not appear to be in the room.
Okay, our next speaker is Jiang Ah Choi.
We don't have that person in the room, but we can, we understand that this is a member of the applicant team who wants, needs to speak. Well, I will note that we have Marlon still in the room and never successfully got, got that person to speak. Maybe we can try again.
With Marlon Elston?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Marlon Elston?
Marlon is unmuted, so we can, you can hear Mr. Elston.
We're hearing some static, but.
Yeah. You there, Mr. Elston?
Okay, if we could check back on others who have indicated they wanted to speak but were not present when called, that would include Mike Vatter. Present in the room, Ryan?
No, not, no.
Billy Strong?
No, I don't see Billy Strong in the room.
Mark Albritton Senior?
No.
Jean Belford?
No.
Okay, I'll note that David Court and David Udelson have signed up, but as they registered as part of the applicant team, they're not able. But I'll note that if in the room, Jiang Ah Choi was not part of, signed up as part of the applicant team. Present in the room?
Jiang Ah Choi in the room now.
Okay, if you could check, Ryan, if others had. Okay, if you could check, Ryan, if others have signed up during the course of the hearing?
There are no further speakers. Let me just check who's in the room. No, no further speakers in the room.
Okay, so with that, this hearing is closed. And I would ask the secretary if there is any other business before the commission?
Chair Lagu, we do have a housekeeping item, if I may.
Please go ahead.
Yes, for those of you that were unable or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage portal through DCP's webpage, or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st floor, New York, New York, 10271.
Thank you. And with that, this remotely held public meeting, the first of 2021, is adjourned. Goodbye to all.
Happy New Year.
Bye-bye, happy new year.
Miss you.
Happy New Year.